Good morning, everyone. Can I have our council members at the dais? And we do have hearing room one open for overflow. Please make sure you find a seat. If you don't see a seat, we'll ask you to move to hearing room one so that we don't have too many people in the aisles, creating a fire hazard. So please find a seat, whether it's here or in hearing room one. Good morning. The special meeting of the Oakland City Council shall come to order. Again, please find a seat. We do have an overflow room and hearing room one downstairs. Thank you.
Good morning and welcome to the special meeting of the Oakland City Council of Monday, December 9th, 2024. Before I call roll, I will give speaker card instructions. If you would like to speak on any item on this agenda, please fill out a speaker's card and return it to the clerk representatives at the front table at the room before the item is called. All cards are due an hour and a half from the start of this meeting. If you were looking to submit an electronic speaker card, they were due 24 hours before the start of this meeting. Unroll, council member five.
Present.
Council member Gallo.
Present.
Council member Jenkins.
Present.
Council member Cobb is on his way. Council member Kaplan.
Here.
Council member Ramachandran is excused. Council member Reed.
Here.
And council president Bass.
Present.
Showing six members present at this time.
Okay, welcome, everyone, to the special meeting of the Oakland City Council. We have a number of budget-related items before us. And before we get started, I do want to note that this meeting is largely for information sharing and discussion. We are planning to continue the budget action items to our regular meeting on December 17th, which is where we expect to be voting on these items. I also want to share that we're going to try to run this meeting as efficiently as possible. I know that one council member needs to leave at 1:00 for a previously scheduled meeting, and then there's other council members that need to leave by 2:00. So once we have a sense of the number of speakers, we'll be allocating public comment time appropriately. So at this time, let's go ahead and call in the consent calendar.
Reading in the consent calendar, which is item five. Receive an information report on fiscal year '24 through '25 first quarter results and year-end projections for the general purpose fund. Item 5.2, receive an information report on the status and funds available in the Equipment Services Fund and Self-Insurance Liability Fund, and information on amounts not yet collected and due to the City of Oakland, and plan and timeline to collect them for the real estate transfer tax and business license tax. And you have, it looks like, four speakers on this item.
Okay, colleagues, any questions or comments before we hear from the public? I do want to note that there are a number of supplemental reports attached to the first item, and also noting that council member Cobb has arrived at 9:47. Let's hear from the public.
As I call your name, please approach the podium in any order. Please state your name for the record before beginning. If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand if I can, so I can easily identify you. If you're in chambers, if you can please line up so we can move through the speakers expeditiously, if you are able to stand. Mr. Hazard, Christopher Taffey, or Taff, sorry if I said that incorrectly. Ms. Asada Olabala, Anwar Barodi, Amelia Whittlesey, in any order, please approach the podium or raise your hand on Zoom.
So, point of clarification. There is no presentation related to this item?
No, these items have been presented previously, so...
So, excuse me, Madam Chair. You're assuming that everybody in the room has heard the presentations previously?
We... There'll be no presentation, and there were no questions from the council members, so we'll take public comment.
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
There were no questions from the council members, so we're just going to take public comment.
I didn't ask that question. I asked, you're assuming that everybody in the room has already heard the presentation that was presently presented? That's an assumption that everybody's prepared to speak to it because they were at the presentation...
Please go ahead with your comments. We have a very full agenda and over 50 public speakers.
Never mind. My number-one concern related to the police department budget. It has an overtime expenditure of $51.89 million. Now, can that be broken down for overtime that is based on patrols being filled or actual duties of police officers on a daily basis that has to be covered by overtime compared to overtime for events, overtime like the misuse of overtime in Chinatown, misuse of overtime in Lake Merritt, so forth and so on? It is essential that you break down overtime expenditure to see, to say, this had to be done in order to perform the day-to-day performance duties of the police department and, in other circumstances, not necessarily had to be done. Okay, as it relates to Measure NN, when you're talking about the budget and Measure NN, 70% of Measure NN does not go to the police department. You can't assume that the budgeting of Measure NN is police-related. It goes to the Office of Violence Prevention, 70%. And what percentage of Measure NN goes to the police department? For ceasefire, for crime reduction. And that only involves 30-something officers. So don't use Measure NN to say we're getting supported funding from a measure to support the police department. That's not true. Okay? The other thing is legal settlements, $10.58 million. Twenty... Is that my time? Okay, I had a whole lot of stuff.
Sir Taff. I want to address the issue of the miraculously discovered $100 million in the city budget. But first, I'd like to urge you, interim mayor, to repeal Sheng Tao's executive order mandating the immediate eviction of all unhoused encampments in Oakland. I urge the city council to save lives by directing the $100 million to build deeply affordable housing for the unhoused citizens of Oakland. That money shouldn't be pirated away to cover the city's financial mistakes and misdeals, especially not its mismanagement and coddling of the Oakland Police Department and its excessive overtime budget in particular, which consistently exceeds the OPD budget and asks only for more. Also, I urge the city to end its abuse of unhoused people as the city repeatedly violates its encampment management policy and the morale settlement. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Amelia Whittlesey. I live in District 2 and work in District 3. I understand that you must make difficult decisions to balance the city's budget, but as a concerned Oaklander, I ask you not to cut funding for the arts. I under, I am lucky enough to work and live in Oakland as an artist and as the managing director of Creative Growth Arts Center on 24th Street in downtown Oakland. Founded in 1974, we're a studio and gallery that supports artists with disabilities. We have been funded and supported by Oakland's arts and cultures community for the last 40 years. Creative Growth is considered highly important to Oakland because it's a leading nonprofit art center that provides a dedicated space for artists with developmental disabilities, challenging societal assumptions about inclusion disability by showcasing their work on a national stage and acting as a vital part of the city's cultural fabric, by promoting the idea that art is accessible to everyone. Essentially, Creative Growth...
Thank you for your comments, your time is up.
You continue to restrict public comment. Before you go, through the chair to the members of the public, for the consent calendar, each item is one minute. So if you sign up for one item, you only get one minute. If you sign up for two, you get two minutes. Thank you.
Did you call my name? Okay, I'm gonna speak. I can speak on anything I want to.
I was, Mr., through the chair to Mr. Hazard, I was addressing the public because they were, didn't understand the time a lot.
Look, you deprived the public for not informing them what we're talking about. Most folks in here, and you said what previously was done. Shame on you. I want to ask a question with regards to the public. I'm speaking, I'm speaking, don't interrupt me, that's my time. He's here, he's interrupting my time.
Halt the time. Council member Cobb.
I understand how sometimes members of the public repeatedly attack us on the council where elected officials, but is it completely unacceptable to attack our city clerk? That is not okay to do that, and this person should apologize to the city clerk for that, for that behavior.
Start the time, and Mr. Hazard, please be respectful of our city clerk. Start the time, start the time.
I need to ask a question. The overtime, are the police department reimbursed for their overtime from the entities out there? Whether it's Chinatown or whether it's the Coliseum, are they reimbursed for that? And if they're reimbursed, why are you charging them overtime? Because the city gets paid. It goes back into the general fund. Is that true or not, Mr. Through the chair to the city administrator? Are the police department reimbursed for overtime costs? Can I get an answer to that?
We will answer the que, we will ask the question when you're done with your comments.
And, and so, and when the budget director told us in October, we were solvent and our credit rating was positive, well, Fitch Rating and Moody turned around and dropped to two levels. So we're in a negative balance right now. That's not what they gave us in the front of October, nor in July, and you, you pushed the public out of participating in the budget process last spring, and then you come up with all this. We raised the questions before you, and you ignored it. And so now you have this special meeting, and it's a crisis, and it borders on insolvency. You know better.
Thank you, Mr. Hazard, your time is up. We will hear from all the public speakers first. Madam Clerk, are there any more speakers?
Anwar Barodi, if you're in the room, please raise your hand or step to the podium, please. Otherwise, at this time, all names have been called.
Okay, I'd like to ask our finance staff or our police department staff if they may answer the question regarding how police overtime may be reimbursed.
To the council president, Brad Johnson, budget administrator. Chief, if you'd like to take this, I would happily defer to you. Sorry. We have reimbursed, there are reimbursements for some elements of OPD overtime on an annual basis. Depending on the activities that happen at the Coliseum or in other reimbursable events, those numbers vary. They're generally between $5 and $10 million. I think we're at roughly $5 for this year thus far. The vast majority of overtime is not reimbursed and is for other police operations which are not specifically charged out. Hopefully that's helpful, chief. Happy to have you saying more.
Good morning, councilman, through the chair. Yes, as Mr. Johnson stated, the department does have a certain amount of overtime that is reimbursed, we call it third-party overtime. Like you take the Big Four downtown, they pay for officers to patrol a certain area within the city. Those four companies contribute to a fund that, when our officers work that detail, it is charged to our overtime account. We then do an invoice to those companies, and they reimburse the city that money. That money then goes back into the general purpose fund. In talking to my budget folks today, that we are, we are probably up to date to about August in the reimbursement, the invoices and reimbursement, but yes, some of that overtime amount, that $52 million amount, is reimbursed.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Councilmember Kaplan, is your hand up? Oh, actually, first, is this related to the current topic? Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Through the chair, just wanted to confirm, how much are we anticipating? You, you indicated that we are paid through August. What are we anticipating that's still outstanding of that total amount that we should be receiving from them, and when will we receive it from them?
Well, I don't have that exact number right now because, truly because of staffing issues, we are behind in our invoicing of these companies. But we know the allotted amount for this entire year is somewhere between seven and ten million dollars that we will get back from these companies that pay for officers to work these details.
Thank you, chief. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you so much, Madam President, and good morning to you and colleagues, as well as all the stakeholders who are attending the meeting. Much appreciation to you all. I just wanted to briefly respond to one of the public questions, and then we'll go to my questions on the, on the more specifics. One is that based on the new report that is part of today's meeting, we are, there is not a claim of insolvency or anything remotely resembling insolvency happening, and that was not a correct statement, and we are clarifying that today, that that is not the status. In terms of the specifics about the available funds, that is the subject of this item, I did want to get clarity from the staff about where the list is of the expenditures from the Equipment Services Fund. That was one of the questions that was part of the second item on this consent calendar, was the uses of the Equipment Services Fund, if they could clarify where that's to be found because it wasn't attached to the, to the agenda item with that name, so if it's somewhere else, if we could clear up where that is. And then also in terms of the business tax collection, I did see in the Q and A that there is an effort underway to collect the unpaid business taxes. If we could get some clarity about the expected timeline for that, and if anybody has it, the expected amounts for that. And then my other question on this item is to get clear on the status of the Measure Q homeless services funds. There are a variety of homeless services to which the council and the city have allocated funding. Measure Q is a ballot measure, not a general fund, and we're hearing that some of the service providers are not receiving those funds, and so we wanted to understand the status of the Measure Q funds. So it's the Equipment Services, where's the list, the status of the Measure Q, and the timeline and amounts in the business tax collection. Thank you so much.
Okay, and thank you to our finance staff. Please go ahead.
Good morning, Erin Rosman, Director of Finance. Through the chair to Councilmember Kaplan. I'll try to go through your questions by memory. You asked about business tax collection and the timeline on business tax collection. So the various divisions in the Revenue Bureau are undertaking an audit or an evaluation of any unpaid, previously unpaid business tax accounts. They would have sent out notices, notices of assessments or notices of determination depending on the type of property. Those revenues, if they come in, would either be individual payments as each individual property owner or taxpayer makes a payment. If that does not yield payment at that time, then it would be brought to the city council in a report for a request for a lien or taken, transitioned to our collections division for collections if it is under five thousand. If it is more than five thousand, it would be transferred to the city attorney's office for a collection. Because each of those accounts have a different circumstance around it, the possible payment or receipt of revenue is on a different timeline based off of each of those. So there is an undetermined amount that could be collected and in a extended period of time. So between now and liens would go on their property in August of twenty twenty-five. If it was a lien, then it would come in as revenue next December, December twenty twenty-five to April twenty twenty-five. If it is an individual payment, that end, that taxpayer would, could make their payment on any day between now and a possible lien or property tax payment. In terms of real estate transfer tax, there is a council item that is agendized to December seventeenth for the recordation of liens for delinquent real estate property transfer taxes. Those would be recorded as liens in August of twenty twenty-five with possible revenue December twenty twenty-five, April twenty twenty-six, unless those individuals decided to pay prior to the property tax statement. Could you remind me of your other questions, please?
I guess, thank you. So was, what is the status of the Measure Q homeless services funds? We understand that some projects that have been approved for funding haven't received their funding, and that was there some question about the Measure Q funds because that is not general funds?
The council president, Councilmember Kaplan, Brad Johnson, budget administrator. Measure Q is discussed in your Q one report. Measure Q, and I'm trying to find you the end number for right now, if fully carried forward, was expected to end negative at the end of this, at the end of the Q four. So one of the things that we were going through the process of with the city administrator is identifying those elements that did need to carry forward and those that could be not carried forward to try to resolve that fund to end at a positive balance number. So Measure Q, if fully carried forward, and I'm, I will try to resolve by the end of the meeting what the actual status of it is, as the Q one report simply notes the high and the low as opposed to the final amount. Measure Q had the possibility of ending in a negative space, which is again why we had expenditure controls in place on it. As noted, Measure Q funds both parks, maintenance efforts, homelessness efforts, and stormwater efforts, and the fund balance is drawn for all three of those efforts.
Thank you. So if you can check that out during the meeting, there's a safe car park program that helps get vehicles off the streets and people who are living in their vehicles into places managed by our local faith-based organizations. And so if we could get some clarity, we've been told they have not received their funding, and this is an important part of how we improve services in the city. And then my last question is, where is the list of the Equipment Services Fund allocations?
That is listed in, that detail of the breakdown of Equipment Services Fund is listed both in your Q one report and the additional amounts going back are listed in the Attachment A for City Administrator Actions for the current fiscal year. So between the Attachment A, in the budget item later in this agenda, and in the detail of the equipment fund discussion, the Q one report, all the fund balance, all the fund balance returns are listed.
And in terms of the funds not being returned to the general fund but actually being used for equipment services expenditures, where would we find that list?
I'm, maybe I'm not understanding the question. The fund balance was returned to the general purpose fund and all the contributing funds per OMB circulars. We have to treat all funds equivalently, so if we're going to return fund balance to one contributing fund, in this case, the general purpose fund, we have to do the same for all the other funds that contribute in the same, by the same mechanism and process. The remaining amounts in the equipment fund are to fund the maintenance and fueling operations of our fleet through the current year.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councilmembers. And Councilmember Kaplan, noting that you, one of these consent items is yours, do you wish to receive these reports or forward them to our meeting on the seventeenth? I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you. Given your prior statement that we would continue the, the budget items, I'd be happy to continue this, unless as our presiding officer, you feel otherwise?
Okay, I would suggest that we continue these two items so that on the seventeenth, we've got all the information available. And just as a point of information to the public, on Legistar, you will find not only our agenda reports, our minutes, you will also find videos of prior meetings, so that's all available for the public's viewing as well. Is there a motion to continue this item?
No move.
I'll second that, but I also have a question.
Okay, Councilmember Gao, your question?
Yes, thank you, and it, you know, I've asked this at previous meetings to administration, to our leadership here in Oakland, in terms of what, what I would recommend that we put, that we receive, and a, what is the vision for Oakland in the year twenty twenty-eight? What are we expecting Oakland to be? The population is changing. I've never saw, I grew up here in Oakland, I never saw homelessness, I never saw illegal dumping, I never see somebody stealing my car, but I, but what is our vision for the future of Oakland? I wanna, is it business development so we can create more jobs, more services, housing? But I, I want to get a report from the administration to be able to share with us, for us, this is the goal that we're setting for the year twenty twenty-eight, and based on our need today, if you want me to be at this level, then this is what I need to invest in. And I think we just keep talking about the problem, the problem, but where do we want to be? If you look at Oakland Unified, they're enrolling this way down. When I was there, there were seventy-four thousand students, but now they only have thirty thousand. So for them to understand that where do I invest my money, that I currently have, because for me, public safety is the number-one priority, and growing up in Oakland, it has always been that, and here in Oakland and many other cities. But I, if, city administrator, were you able to put a vision together of what you see Oakland becoming in the next two, three years so I can direct my investment to meet that goal? Have you guys put that together for the council to, to hear in terms of what, you know, population changes and people? In my district, five, is, population has changed dramatically, right? You know, Gabriel, we grew up here when it was primarily African-American, then it became Mexican-American, we all left town, we went to Tracy Stockton. So now the population has changed dramatically, and now when you look at the enrollment of Castlemont High School, it used to be ninety percent African-American, now it's eighty-five percent people from Central America living there. So what is the future of Oakland that we need to focus on and invest the money that we do have? And, and so I would like to get that analysis from you in terms of where does our leadership and administratively see Oakland being in the next three, four, or five years, because Oakland is changing dramatically, and we need to invest the dollars to make sure that our children and youth are able to go to school safely like we're used to. Now, we can't even walk to school and walk back home. So we need, anyway, so I, I would like to get that data from you, and that would be extremely helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gao. So that's been noted. The administration is working on a strategic plan, and as a reminder, and Councilmember Gao, you are always very good reminding us every single year, the council, during the biennial budget process, which will start in the new year, also does a strategic planning retreat, so that work will be well underway. Okay, at this point, we do have a motion and a second to receive and forward these two items to our December seventeenth meeting on consent. Let's call the roll. On the consent calendar, moved by Councilmember Kaplan, seconded by Councilmember Gao, to continue this item to December seventeenth. Councilmember Fife?
Aye.
Councilmember Gao?
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaplan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramachandran is excused. Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
And Council President Bass?
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven ayes, one excused, Ramachandran. Okay, now we're moving to our consent calendar. There are three items, and we will take the, I'm sorry, now we are moving to our non-consent calendar. We have three items, we'll take the first two items together. Madam Clerk, please call those two items in. Calling, excuse me, calling in items eight and nine together. Item eight, adopt the following pieces of legislation, a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty-four through twenty-five mid-cycle budget to authorize the transfer of funds into the general purpose fund and adjust other appropriations, affirming the budget balancing actions taken by the city administrator pursuant to the powers and duties granted under the city charter and the authority granted pursuant to Resolution Number nine zero three two six to maintain the fiscal health of the city and making extreme fiscal necessity declarations necessary to utilize restricted funds, and a resolution amending Resolution eight seven zero six two, which establishes Sugar Sweetened Beverage Distribution Tax Subfund within the general purpose fund for the purpose of collecting said tax revenue to upon declaration of extreme fiscal necessity suspend the requirement to consider advisory board recommendations prior to the appropriating of funds and declaring a state of extreme fiscal necessity for the purpose of suspending said restrictions on the use of sugar sweetened tax revenue. And an ordinance amending Oakland Municipal Code, Chapter fifteen point six two, Affordable Housing Trust Fund to allow funds distributed to the city under redevelopment dissolution law to be used for any lawful purpose upon a declaration of extreme fiscal necessity. And then reading in item nine, adopt the resolution to amend fiscal year twenty-three through twenty-four budget to allocate up to thirty million in Fund eleven hundred and transfer those funds into the general purpose fund reserve. We have a number of speakers for this item. If you sign up for both items, we will put your cards together for a time. Thank you. Thank you. And before we hear from the administrator, I do want to share some logistics and a few framing remarks. So we have over one hundred speakers for the remaining items on our agenda, and we will start to lose quorum at about one o'clock. So with that, I do need to limit our public comment time to one minute per item, and so as we have called in item eight and nine, when we get to public comment, if you signed up for one of those items, you'll get one minute. If you signed up for both, you will get two minutes. Seating time is allowed, as you know, on our non-consent calendar. So just to frame this up, before we hear from the city administrator, I want to remind ourselves that as a city council and as a city, we've prioritized community safety as well as housing security and the essential services that keep our city healthy and clean, as well as collecting every dollar that is owed to us. We also want to make sure that there's transparency in making fiscally sound decisions based on real financial data as we go through this process. And today, given our financial situation, we're discussing a back-to-basics approach to both our budget and city services. I also want to underscore that while our financial situation is serious, the council has provided direction to the city administrator through our contingency budget, and today we will weigh the city administrator's further proposals on how to rebalance our mid-cycle budget so that we can close our current fiscal year's projected deficit, as well as ensure our emergency reserves are at the required level, and we do not need to declare a fiscal emergency under our consolidated fiscal policy. At our November nineteenth budget meeting and previously, the council asked for clarity on what has already been reduced by the city administrator, as well as a proposal for action. We now have that information in front of us for the council, and that includes administrative actions as well as potential actions that require the council's approval. We are planning to make sure that we take action by the end of the calendar year and set up our new city leadership for success. And having navigated the city council as council president over our last four years of budgeting, I look forward to continuing to work with the administration, the mayor's office, and the city council to ensure that we have the leadership necessary to make these hard choices. As I said earlier, because these proposals were just made public on Friday, today we are receiving information and asking questions, we're hearing from the public. We want to make sure that we have time to hear that public input and to digest these proposals. And so at our next council meeting, which is our regular meeting on Tuesday, the seventeenth, at three thirty, that is when we will call for votes on these items to balance our budget. And I do want to note a couple things regarding public safety. I know being safe in our community is incredibly important, it's a huge priority for all of us, and I want to underscore that the deep investments in public safety over the past year are continuing to pay off. We do have at our Public Safety Committee meeting our regular crime data report, and that will show that violent crime has been reduced by thirty-five percent compared to last year, and overall crime has been reduced by thirty-three percent. And I know that data is one thing, we also- And I know that data is one thing, we also need to feel safe and secure in our communities. And so I do want to make sure that we know that we have permanent public safety leadership that is very strong at this moment. We have our OPD chief, who you heard from, Chief Mitchell, our fire chief, Chief Covington, our violence prevention chief, Chief Joshi, as well as their deputy chiefs, who have combined over 100 years of collective experience. And in these budget proposals, the administrator, having heard from the council as well as the public, has preserved Oakland's ceasefire violence intervention program, as well as OPD patrol and investigations and services to improve 911 response times, which are up 71, with, which are up with 71% calls answered in 15 seconds or less. So again, I want to underscore that as challenging as these budget reductions will be, we are clearly prioritizing sound fiscal leadership, community safety, as well as housing security and the basic services we know that Oaklanders deserve. And as we have this conversation, we welcome all stakeholders to provide solution-oriented suggestions for how we can continue to balance our budget, both in this current year as well as longer term. And with that, I will turn it over to our city administrator, Mr. Justin Johnson.
Thank you, President Bass, members of the council. I want to first start by thanking you and your budget team, Councilmember Reed, and some of the insight that you provided, Councilmember Jenkins, you know, thank you also for your insight, Councilmember Kaplan as well. This process has truly been quite a challenge for this organization as a collective whole. I want to say thank you to our directors. When we placed the call to ask for their insight, reductions, and decisions, it was a very difficult decision for them, and I want to publicly acknowledge that. And I want to tell them, thank you, each and every one of our directors for their hard work, the, the toil that they went through to make these fiscal decisions, I want to say thank you. In addition, I want to thank the finance team that worked tirelessly for hours upon hours, going into the weekends, late nights, and sacrifices with their families. I want to say thank you for the work that they put forth in getting us to this point. So I want to go ahead. So I want to go ahead and get into the presentation. I will acknowledge this, the, the content is very dense and is a bit on the longer side, but please bear with us, because the agenda report is 16 pages long. So I want to break this down at a high level as best as we can for folks to understand. So the purpose of today's presentation is to walk through some of the fiscal challenges leading to the projected deficit, an overview of what the deficit actually is, highlighting some of the short-term, based, breaking it down on phases, phase one and phase two, short-term actions that we're taking to address this deficit. In addition, some of the midterm and long-term revenue enhancements, one-time revenues, service delivery changes designed to reduce expenditures. And one person I did not publicly acknowledge and wanted to say thank you to is that of Mrs. Deborah Edgely for her hard work and thought partnership in this process on the revenue side. Deborah, I think you're behind me, I just want to tell you thank you. All right, so let's go ahead and get started. So. So given where we are, the fiscal challenges leading to this projected deficit obviously hinges on a lot of what has happened historically for the last several fiscal cycles, to include growth of ongoing programming with one-time funds during COVID-19, funding of OPEB liabilities, and the ever-growing challenges of CalPERS benefits costs. It's important to acknowledge that during COVID, the city relied on $120 million from ARPA funds, American Rescue, and Plan Act to cover operating expenses to avoid significant reductions. With that said, when ARPA funds were fully spent by 22, fiscal year '22, '23, the city was left with escalating costs. And since 2019 and 2020, the city FTE count grew almost 130 FTEs across all funds, which does not include OPD and fire trainees, further contributing to the structural deficit. In addition, it is also important to acknowledge and highlight the real impacts on our OPEB or older, other post-employment benefits, mostly retiree medical benefits to city employees, previously committed employee benefits that have resulted in unfunded liabilities. Even with steady growth in revenues into the future, there is not nearly the same rate of growth to match the costs associated with funding CalPERS contributions through the state retirement system, but also healthcare costs have continued to grow. And this is not new for our organization, many public and private sector organizations are experiencing the same. Next slide, please. So a little bit of history in the sense of where we took this process and where we started largely rests in President Bass, thank you for acknowledging the work with the adoption of the contingency budget. Largely, it was hinged on the decision that was made with respect to the adoption of the budget, which did call out the browning out of five fire stations, the elimination of two police academies, reductions in grants, and unexecuted contracts. Next slide, please. So just to frame up, when we're talking about the budget deficit, a couple of elements, I think, are, are, are critical. As you look at the, the chart that's in front of you, the revenues that we received is approximately $758 million. However, on the expenditure side, it's exceeding those revenues by approximately $851 million, creating an estimated fund balance of negative $99 million. Going forward, if you drop down to second category, the use of fund balances in '24, '25, as we think about what we heard earlier of, of returning excess fund balances in the Equipment Services Fund, the finance department went through that process, and they reallocated those funds to the tune of $8.3 million to the appropriate category of funding, funding source or department. In addition, and working in consultation with our legal team, the recognition that our legal settlements equated to $10.58 million, which we'd have to make sure we account for. And in addition, as was stated, the carryforwards, which I will speak a little bit about, totaled about 27, just over $27 million. And as we think about some of the carryforwards that we have to make sure that we encumber as we move forward, some of the big highlights are the debt service payments on the Coliseum. There's approximately $4 million or so associated with, about $4 million or so associated with grant matches for Head Start, in addition to another million dollars, which is allocated towards the implementation, full implementation of our required financial system going forward, it's about a million dollars or so. So those are some of the big-ticket, high-level items, not all that we, that are included in our carryforward accounts. Next slide, please. And so as we move forward, one of the things we want to make sure that we are highlighting and keeping at top of mind are our organizational priorities, which are around housing security and homeless and solutions, our community safety, prevention and healing, good jobs, vibrant economy, clean, healthy, sustainable neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So as we get into the summary of phases, and if you all will take a look at the top of the, of the chart, what we're starting out is with a cumulative deficit between the projected deficit of 115, in addition to the carryforward dollar amounts, that totals $129.7 million. Now, some of the immediate actions that we've taken to start, it's the use of our emergency reserves. The use of that emergency reserve totals $9.62 million, and that is in excess of the 7.5% threshold that we are required by our own respective policies to carry. Now, that care, that emergency reserve fund, certainly it, based on GFOP principles, that 7.5% is actually good, but aspirationally, we want to be higher, but I think through the hard work and wisdom of prior councils to allocate the appropriate resources is helping us in this scenario. If you drop down to the second category, which calls out city council and administrative reductions, which means no staff layoffs in this particular phase, it includes administrative actions such as our OPD reductions, as well as the postponement or delay or canceling of, of police academies in this fiscal year. In addition, what it does call out is the browning out of two additional, two additional fire stations on top of the one that is currently under construction. And if I'm not mistaken, we have about 25, 26 stations, if I remember off the top of my head. So that is two, that are two stations that we're talking about. And in consultation, and as I understand with the finance team, working closely with, with the chief, we feel as though we are able to accomplish this with the staffing, using telestaff to sort of seed individuals and, from a scheduling standpoint, across a multitude of departments, to make sure we are minimizing the impacts on an operational level. Now, with that said, there are also council actions that we are asking this body to take. It is the unrestricted and transferring to the general purpose fund from Funds 1100, which is the self-insurance fund, Fund 1870, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Fund 1020, the rainy day fund, as well as Fund 1030, sugar sweetened beverage tax. Now, cumulatively, all those actions, council actions, administrative actions, got us to 104, just over 104 million dollars. However, that did not get us the whole way. There's still a respective balance of $15.9 million that we have to close. And through this process, and as every, your rock was turned and everything that we tried to explore, worked hard to try to turn it over, but we could not get there, until there are additional actions for consideration that are on the table, specifically additional cuts specifically to field FTEs to the tune of about 92 FTEs. In addition, potentially the browning out of four additional fire stations as one potential option. Or there is that opportunity to engage with our labor partners, hopefully, to discuss alternatives that we can certainly work together to address. I will acknowledge they are in close contracts, and so certainly, there was a respective ask to say, hey, look, is this a conversation that we could have as an organization? And finally, the last option that I think none of us necessarily want to consider is that of balancing by declaring a state of fiscal emergency, tapping even further into our emergency reserves. But the importance there is to make sure that we are holding up and propping up our emergency reserves at a level that is fiscally responsible. Uh, next slide, please. So to dig a little bit deeper in our Phase One immediate actions, and when we talk about the transfer of emergency funds, Fund 1011, excuse me, our emergency refund balance, as I mentioned, stands at 7.5%, which is $60.5 million. There is currently $70.16 million in the emergency fund account, which is approximately 8.1%, just a little bit over that threshold that we, that we talked about. And it's proposed to move a portion of that, which is 9.62 million, dropping us to that 7.5% threshold into the general fund to help balance. With that said, this does require council action. Next slide, please. Going a little bit further, as we talk about Phase One immediate actions, specifically around assumption changes, reductions, cost shifting across the board, many of the assumptions that we really talk about are areas where we can realize savings, but also, as we look at how we projected revenues across the board, we were able to make some additional assumptions to help close that deficit a little bit more, and I'll talk a bit more in detail about that. But in addition, as I mentioned, some of the, some of the asks, and specific asks of departments for us to close this deficit resulted in a, resulted in reductions of about $60.65 million. Now, as we asked our directors, as you all, as we've talked about before, there is a strategic planning process that we are wrapping up, but part of that strategic planning process is a tool that was used or recommended that we use to make those critical decisions. And finally, as we talk about the Phase One immediate actions, it's the shifting of costs from the general fund to the appropriate measures that our voters have allowed us to have access to going forward. Next slide, please. So here in, deeper in Phase One, when we talk about some of the immediate actions, I'll list just a few. Council savings around the, serving as interim mayor, there's a dollar amount there. But some of the more material items that I want to highlight, it's the academy-related overtime backfill, since we are not running a fire academy. In addition, on the finance side, there are significant efforts underway, in my mind, I want to say they're, they're significant, on the business tax and revenue tax enforcement efforts that have been highlighted by many of our labor partners and conversations with them, and those projections, we're looking at about $4.25 million. One of the key elements also from the fire department, and I'm very grateful for their partnership and leadership and, and the wisdom of the department for doing this, a lot of the mutual aid reimbursements, when our department is called upon to support other communities in times of need, there is also that opportunity to realize and recoup some of those same savings from a reimbursement standpoint, and that equates to almost an additional million dollars. And finally, one of the key areas with partnership of the Department of Transportation and the work that they've been doing, it is no secret that we probably have not, well, I won't say probably, have not doing parking enforcement well, but I think that, that the emphasis and the focus, we've been able to lean in far more than we have in the past. And based on the, that the feedback and projections, working in partnership with the department, we seek to see an increase in our parking enforcement efforts, an increase of about $3.69 million. So that's in, when we say an assumption, that's an adjustment in increased revenue that we certainly believe comfortably we'll be able to realize by the end of the fiscal year. All right, next slide, please. As we talked about, the tool that departments were asked to use to balance the budget, this is just an example of some of the key areas that we wanted to make sure that, that we're focusing on. So between equity, economic development, excuse me, equity, economic budget, legal requirements, operational capacity, planning and viability, support and communications, these were very critical. Now, one of the things that I will absolutely hang our hat on, it's what are the legally obligated, responsible things for us to do as a municipality? Whether it's a state requirement or a charter requirement, that has to be our starting focus. And as I've talked about, you know, obviously, everything that we do is, you know, we try our best to do so through the lens of equity. But also, one of the key elements that I have to make sure I acknowledge is, with the reductions that have been identified by departments, there will be an operational and capacity impact across the organization. And if we say we're no longer providing the services, we have to be honest as an organization, and as an organization, and say, you know what, if we're gonna reduce, then we have to acknowledge the fact that service levels will be impacted. And so for me, in leading these departments and saying, hey, look, you know what, I have to acknowledge the fact that there's some things that you would not be able to do, because there just is not capacity. We want to do and focus on the main thing and let the main thing be the main thing with the delivery of services across the board. Next slide, please. As we get a little bit deeper into the Phase One immediate actions, and those reductions, as I stated, equates to about $60.65 million. To highlight some of the high-level items, it's a reduction of general purpose fund overtime and reallocation of special units within the Oakland Police Department. I'm grateful for the conversation and partnership with the department, with Brooklyn Williams and the mayor's office, to ensure that our focus, as President Bass stated, focusing in on ceasefire, that should be, that should be maintained and untouched, making sure our patrol function, it stays at a high level, as well as our investigative function within Oakland Police Department. In fact, the goal is actually to reallocate OPD resources back into patrol and having more of our seasoned officers out on patrol, helping and supporting our respective communities. And one thing I want to make sure that I note and acknowledge is the fact that this academy class that is currently in, in the Oakland Police Department, that is slated to graduate this month, those individuals will graduate and they will be sworn in, if I'm not mistaken, on December 18th. So with that, with that said, in addition, as a, as I already mentioned, the browning out of two additional fire stations do not result in layoffs or demotions in this particular phase. Now, one of the things that chief did acknowledge is working through telestaff to make sure the scheduling aspect is critical, and we also have to acknowledge the number of firefighters that are out on some semblance of long-term leave for whatever particular reason. In addition, something else I wanted to call out specifically around the reallocation of underspending across departments, as you'll see in this chart, there are two categories, 4510 and 4550, citywide, the reallocating of underspending in those categories back to the, back into the appropriate source where they're coming from. And this is a process that we go through every year during the budget process, so this exercise is very, it's very consistent with our budget process, but has to, we have to do it now. In addition, I have to acknowledge the homeless services division, specifically the homelessness funding in the general, just in the general purpose fund, to, to reprioritize the department to draw down from federal grants and not rely on what is in the to draw down from federal grants and not rely on what is in the general fund. And finally, I will publicly acknowledge the fact that this does call for the elimination of the ambassador program to the tune of 1.1 million dollars. Now, with that said, I will, I will state that there's an agenda item that this body passed to where we can have some form of ambassadors in place to the tune of about $400,000, so that continues to move forward, but the balance of that will be, will not So as we go into some of the more immediate actions, specifically what we are asking the council to do, it is the unrestricting of four key funds that, as I already mentioned, the self insurance liability fund, which is Fund 1100, 1870, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the unrestricting of sugar sweetened beverage tax dollars, as well as the unrestricting of Fund 1020, our vital services, vital services stabilization fund. And so we have a breakdown of what those actions are. It is not all, but the full list can be found in attachment A in the actual agenda report. And it also, the agenda report does lay out specifically what those particular funds So as we call out many of the administrative balancing actions exercised, that we exercised, it was the, the whole purpose and the goal was to identify cost-saving opportunities across departments, reallocating into, reallocating resources into the appropriate measures across the board, but also leveraging non-general purpose funds where feasible. Let's talk a little bit about phase two, some of the subsequent actions that you'll see in this particular report. The first element, as I mentioned, would be the elimination of 92 FTEs at a cost of about 5.8 million dollars, a reduction in operations and maintenance to the tune of 2.4 million dollars, and potentially the browning out of four additional fire stations, which is a cost, which, which costs us about 7.6 million dollars. Or, as I mentioned earlier, engaging with our labor partners as an ask to discuss alternatives that address the outstanding deficit, but we also want to make sure we have that measure of flexibility to say, is there some combination of both that we can actually explore? And finally, as I made mention to earlier, declaring a state of fiscal emergency and using the emergency reserves, which we do not recommend. So if we talk a little bit about, about our midterm and long-term horizon, some of the key elements in this process is not just looking at what are the cuts, but also are there opportunities to identify additional revenue sources? So the list runs a gamut of an increase in, in sales tax measures, which will be, see a fiscal impact of approximately 21 million dollars. In addition, a parts, partial tax revenue measure to explore to fund departments charged with oversight, fiscally would, would see us realize approximately 22 million dollars. And that over, those oversight agencies specifically want to call out CPRA, the Citizens Police Review Agency, Public Ethics Commission, and City Auditor. In addition, a partial tax revenue measure to bridge financial solvency by way of a, which would cost us, which would see us realize about 40 million dollars. In addition, a reduction in the PFRS tax levy to maintain affordability for residents, and that's a line item that residency on the tax bill, see a reduction of that rolling off of the tax bill. In addition, I wanted to also highlight some of the work in that our labor partners put forward with respect to their roadmap, it's calling out the updating of our fees to reflect full cost collections, improve our enforcement of the city tax code, revenue collections and traffic laws, but also updating our development code to increase density and more economic development opportunities, which is also a reference in the Oakland roadmap put together by our labor partners. Now, all this to say, I think it's important to make sure we acknowledge the fact that there's still an opportunity in front of us, which specifically is the sale of the Coliseum. So once we get to a place where we are still in a purchase and sell agreement and the receipt of those funds, we certainly want to make sure that we shore up our reserves across the board, but in addition, we want to make sure that we strategically identify what are the services that potentially could be restored if we have some offset ongoing revenues to match, to make sure that we can go ahead and continue those services as prescribed. So we are certainly delighted to see this transaction move forward, and we certainly, I, I think all of us have, you know, quite a bit of insight and interest in making sure that the service levels that we're talking about today are restored. Next slide, please. So in addition, I'm wrapping up here shortly, in addition to the midterm and long-term explorative options that we've explored are the examining of our city-operated Head Start programs. One of the things that we certainly acknowledge is the fact that the general purpose fund is supporting some of our Head Start programs, but is there an opportunity for more collaboration and partnership across the board? In addition, are there other operational efficiencies that we can dig a little bit deeper specifically around the combining of departments, which we've already talked about previously, specifically Head Start, OPRYD, HSD, Human Services Department, but also the exploration of combining the Oakland Public Works and Department of Transportation permanently, as was the case in the past. And there is some costing to see if this is something that makes good financial sense and operational sense, given the fact that there is already a level of collaboration with these two departments. In addition, I want to acknowledge and highlight the fact that many of the administrative reductions that we've talked about, specifically 15.4 million dollars in non-community safety changes that might be sustainable, though with significant operational impacts. 33.1 million dollars in, in public safety changes, these reductions are not sustainable in the midterm, particularly the reduced services and brownout of two fire companies. It is not sustainable. In addition, the 7.3 million in non-community safety changes, mostly through field positions, might be sustainable, though with significant operational impacts as we've, as I've called out. And finally, the 8.7 million safety changes that these reductions through a browning out of four additional stations is not something that is sustainable, and we certainly want to be in a space to avoid having to take that particular step. So other policy considerations just for this body, because some of you have asked specifically around going less than the 7.5% that we've identified based on our policy and our reserve policy, we did have an opportunity to reach out to our external financial advisor, and he too agreed with the professional staff that we do not want to go below that 7.5%. However, we want to make sure that we go higher to make sure our fiscal house is maintained. And so that is something you'll see later in the appreciation, in the, the presentation, on how we want to move that forward. And finally, I will definitely say I appreciate the fact that, you know, many of the council members, and just a recommendation by our good friend Deborah Edgely, in helping us think through how we look at all of our fiscal policies to make sure it leads us to a place of financial, financial stability. So in closing, as I get into some of the next steps that I want to call out, it is the strategic goals for long-term sustainability. One of the things that I've talked about quite a bit with this body publicly and privately is setting clear measurable fiscal goals within a two to four-year timeframe. The general purpose fund has to be maintained at a level of 7.5%. Establishing a short-term plan to address the long-term liabilities, which our finance team have talked about in prior presentations at finance, at, at the Finance Committee meetings. Identify plans to address the negative fund balance across the city. Establishment of our performance metrics for all services. And it's important for me to say, it's not just internal, it is also external when we are in a place to where we are ceding money to organizations outside of this organization. It is absolutely imperative that those, that there are performance measures attached. That should be an imperative for everything we do with taxpayer dollars are going out the door. And finally, I will acknowledge the fact that we certainly have to review our procurement rules and procedures to increase efficiency and reduce the administrative burdens that our organization and outside our organization that exists today. And I want to thank the Finance Department for the work that they've done to, to commission a Baker-Tilly study to show us how we can get to that point, so now we're at a place to have that report ready and we can start working through PMing that, project managing it through a process for full implementation. And continuing to go on, just my, my last two slides here, as I mentioned, setting those clear expectations, and again, this has always been, and we've talked about this being a three to four-year horizon for us to get our financial house certainly in order, but this would be a big step in the right direction. Our four-year goal obviously is to develop a 10-year balanced budget and capital plan, establishment of a reserve policy that hits a level of approximately 16.7%, which is consistent with the Government Finance Officers Association best practice, resolve all negative fund balances. But again, we get to a place of actually implementing the results of what we saw from our procurement, our procurement process and the study that was commissioned. And finally, our, our last recommendation in closing, it is asking this body to adopt a resolution amending the FY 2425 mid-cycle budget to authorize the transfer of funds into the general purpose fund and adjust those appropriations and affirming the budget decisions that we are making to balance this year's budget. Also adopting a resolution to unrestrict the sugar sweetened beverage tax dollars to Fund 1030 to use in extreme fiscal necessity, and finally adopting an ordinance amending the Affordable Housing Trust Fund 1870 to use in a case of extreme fiscal necessity, which does require two readings. So I am thankful for this opportunity to share with you the actions that we have taken thus far, certainly look forward to the conversation for additional support, guidance, et cetera. But again, I also just want to say again, thank you to this entire leadership team and also the employees that have leaned in to help, try to help us guide this ship in the right, the direction from a fiscal perspective. Thank you.
Thank you Administrator Johnson and to your entire team who has worked with you on the administrators' actions as well as the proposals for the council to consider. So that was item number eight, our budget balancing item. I do want to invite Councilmember Kaplan to speak briefly on item number nine, the general purpose fund reserve item that she is bringing forward with myself, and then we will have some council discussion and then public comment. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you so much, Madam President. Good morning again to everyone. So just a brief recap of where we are at, just a few short weeks ago, we received a report that said there were no options and there were no funds available, and that therefore the city was headed for a declaration of fiscal emergency. And at that meeting, I put forward an alternative suggestion that we look at some of our special funds and enterprise funds, and I specifically talked about the self-insurance liability fund as an example of a fund that had sufficient extra money in it, that it could be used to help solve that problem and avoid that crisis. And so therefore, I scheduled this item which you see here today. In the intervening time, the staff and the city administrator and others worked together to bring the proposal which you've just heard, and I would note that that proposal incorporates some of my suggestions, including the use of that fund which I had identified, as well as others and additional ones that they recommend. And so to clarify for anyone who was given the incorrect impression that the city had no choices and was out of money, that what is before us today is a growing consensus and unity within the city, that now this recommendation is part of the administrator's recommendation that we're having today, and so will not need to be necessarily voted on as a separate item, and that we have in fact identified available other funds that will allow us to abide by our general purpose fund reserve policy and will not require a fiscal emergency as described in our consolidated fiscal policy. So I want to thank everyone for all the work that has gone into this effort. In addition, we heard in the administrator's report some additional options that we could consider, and so I think it is important for us to acknowledge that we need not only short-term solutions, but long-term solutions that create more cost savings, efficiency, and effectiveness year after year. And one of those options is to combine some functions that have been separated and that their separation creates additional costs. And so I wanted to follow up specifically with the recommendation that we do schedule an item to go ahead and create the Oakland Department of Transportation and Infrastructure, sorry, the Oakland Department of Transportation and Infrastructure, and we do have an item for KTOP to screen share to do so. And so this is a scheduling item to authorize the creation of the Oakland Department of Transportation and Infrastructure and to make the budget amendments that doing so creates. This will allow us to save money, it will also allow us to save time, both for city staff and for outside bodies and people who are, excuse me, who are with us.
Councilmember Kaplan, are you okay? And is her staff in the office with her?
Thank you, sorry about that.
Very good.
And so, and so this is my scheduling recommendation in line with that, and would like to invite our transportation director to share his comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. Director Rowland, do you wish to speak to this?
All right, thank, thank you.
Please go ahead.
Josh Rowland, the Director of the Oakland Department of Transportation and presently acting, or soon to be acting for Office of Public Works, as, as you know, I was involved in, in another city in the separation of the DOT from Public Works, coming to Oakland, there, there are some, some, I think, interesting nuance in how DOT was created, the first of which is that our capital projects are actually two separate teams. We, we have some very highly skilled, highly professional people who, who work collaboratively together, and, and I think that this, this idea deserves warrants merit. It's, when it comes to the capital project side, that, that's an area that really needs some attention with the city. DOT is focused primarily on, on paving and up projects such as that, and I would equate it essentially to a, to a football team. You know, you, you don't have a team for the offense and a team for the defense, you have, you have separate units, but you have a unified leadership team, and that's, that's a recommendation I would, I would suggest that, that we continue to, to support and, and investigate as we go forward. And I do, I do believe that there will be actually efficiencies in the project delivery. It'll, it would fall into, as City Administrator Johnson said, more into your, your midterm successes as we're able to produce more work with the people that we have and also create growth opportunities for, for our staff.
Thank you, Director. So colleagues, at this time, if you have any comments or questions, please raise your hand. I want to remind us that we will start to lose quorum between 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock, so I want us to be as efficient as possible. Okay, I see Councilmember Fife, and then Gao, Councilmember Fife?
I'll reserve my comments about the presentation that we, we received until after the public comment, but if there was a motion that, if that was a motion made by Councilmember Kaplan around scheduling this item that Director Rowan just spoke to, I would be interested in making a second because I do, I would like to explore what that looks like, and I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to do that.
Thank you. Yes, I would so move, and I would note that this can save us money, save us time, and provide more efficient and effective service. Thank you.
Okay, noting the motion and second, but we will take the vote after public comment. Go ahead, Councilmember Gao, and then Kalb.
Yes, thank you. I would, you know, we've been here many times before. I still remember Parks and Recreation had their own department, maintaining their parks daily, and, and quality from the rec centers that were open Saturdays and Sunday nights, but this city council decided before I got here, you merged Parks and Rec with Public Works, and look at the quality of service you're getting today. Then we joined Public Works with Transportation. We were, we're a city with a population of 450,000 people, but for me, it's really the quality and the delivery. the quality and the deliveries of service that we need to focus on and not just, you know, be creative administratively, inform all these communities together, but I've never seen those people go out there and help me pick up the trash in the park or see what Parks and Rec needs to do. And so for me, it's really important, and I have many people from outside of Oakland coming into Oakland and trying to, didn't see how we were, what we did, and what we need to do to make this city grow, to attract more businesses, to attract the quality of service. So for me, council members, I would, you know, ask you to please consider that, because where our recreation centers and our parks are today, we're not like that 10 years, 12 years ago. The quality was there, they were open Saturdays and Sundays, and my children can go there and receive education, recreation, and enjoy the neighborhood. So I think we have to be really careful when you start merging one department with the other and you're trying to save a nickel and a dime, but you lost the quality of delivering of service, and that's what I'm looking for. I want a quality of service being delivered to our families that has been lost, missing, and we need to make sure we get to that level to deliver so we can attract people to come to Oakland, stay in Oakland, and continue to grow this city like once, at one time we used to do. Thank you, and I look forward to having that discussion further with your administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kalb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, for clarity, right now, we have a motion that's a scheduling motion, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's fine. Let's schedule it and then we'll have a debate about it. I assume everything will be in the packet later this week, so we'll be able to review it before next, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Reed?
Yes, Council President Bass, I'll withhold my comments and more questions, there are 36 of my questions in the packet for the public to review, and I want to appreciate the city administrator, the finance and budget team, and the department directors for responding to the many questions from me and my team outside of the 36 in the packet. I did want to ask just for clarity through the chair to the city administrator, if you could provide the public the timeframe for anticipated, for immediate action versus actions with later effects, if you could share those time periods clearly, if we're talking about December 31st, what period into next year? And then I also wanted for you to clarify for those who may be grantees, vendors, community partners who will be impacted by decisions, you may mention other community safety ambassadors, what the time period and staff capacity is to outreach to those organizations for awareness of what that time will be, where those fundings and contracts will stop, be eliminated, or shifted in any way with the funds that they are receiving. Thank you.
Through the chair to Councilmember Reed, many of the actions that have been identified here, we seek to implement them at the very beginning of the year, January 1st. With respect to the noticing for external organizations, the city attorney's office has worked with us to try to identify and land on the final noticing that we will issue, and that noticing will be forthcoming, and I don't have a specific date, but I'll certainly highlight that as soon as I get a specific date, but it will be pending in the next couple of weeks, I would say, from a noticing standpoint.
Thank you, and that's the same for the community-based order. Thank you. I'll reserve all questions for us to hear from the public. Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will hear from the public. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
As I call your name, please approach the podium in any order. Please state your name for the record. As you heard earlier, we have over 80 speakers for this item, so I will be calling them in batches of 25. If you're in the room, please step to the podium. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand so I can easily identify you. And again, if you signed up for both eight and nine, we have put your cards together. Also, if you have time seated to you, please state that at the beginning so I can assign you the appropriate amount of time. Thank you. Gregory G., Mr. Hazard, Ms. Asada Olabala, James Birch, Vanessa Riles, Miguel Lopez, Holly Alonso, Deonte Noble, Walter Perez, Kania Alexander, Ashara Akadeo, sorry if I said that incorrectly, Courtney Powell, Daria Lowens, Darren Lowens, Ginger Yanchi, Art Together, Rochon Oats, Kelly Tu, Jennifer Tran. Go ahead, Mr. Hazard.
The legislative body cannot prohibit public criticism of policies, procedures, programs, or services of agencies or of acts or missions of the legislative body. This is from the Brown Act 54954.3C, Dan Copf. So we could criticize any way we want to. This is from the Brown Act. Stop fooling the public. And Gao, when are you going to fix the Curt Flood Park? You continue to talk about it. Four or five years, nothing's happened with Curt Flood Park in your district, so take care of that. To the chair, and to staff. Are you listening? I brought before you a recommendation to give a goaded handshake to, you got 26 or 29 departments, and to staff, was that done? Because that could be a tremendous cost savings. I bet you either of these things that you have here, it may exceed some cost savings, so you wouldn't have to lay off people, and certainly not 91 FTEs. Also, through the chair, can the public hear what was the dollar saving, reimbursement from third party for police overtime, and how much did that come to? So we got one, that, we got two, excuse me. Well, anyway, just.
Thank you, Mr. Hazard, your time is up.
Those answers, 54.
If your name was called, please approach the podium and begin your comment.
Good morning. My name is, my name is Leva Zand, and I'm the Executive Director of Art Together, a nonprofit located in downtown Oakland, and we serve residents throughout the city. I'm here today to express my deep concern about the proposed budget cut to the Cultural Affairs Division. Oakland's art budget is already less than half a percent of the city's annual budget, and now it'd be completely gone. The funding for public arts is already cut and gone. Please do not cut arts funding. This cut impacted already awarded grants from last year. We renewed our organization lease a couple months ago, counting on this money that has been promised to us. We have no idea how to pay our rent in a couple of months if this money does not come. With federal and state funding for arts already decreasing significantly and philanthropic supports are less than ever, these local funds are critical lifeline. Cutting them will overwhelmingly impact a small organization that provides free programs to underserved community. Oakland's cultural organization are still suffering from shutdown from the pandemic, some of them already closing their door. With this call, we might be the next.
Thank you, ma'am, your time is up.
Hi, my name is Kelly To, and I'm a born and raised Oakland native since 2001. I grew up with Vietnamese refugees who came here to live in America during the post-Vietnam War, as my family was not fortunate enough to leave as soon as possible because my grandpa went to jail for 10 years. And when he came out, me and my family quickly evacuated, but my family had to split. Me and my father, my aunt, and my grandpa went to Oakland first to work a year to collectively sponsor the rest of my family, which were my grandma and my youngest aunt and uncle. They reunited and lived in Oakland. As a multidisciplinary artist, I'm angry, hurt, confused on why Oakland, the Oakland Council cut off art funds. Do you know where it's going to? Where do you guys plan to use the money then? To fix the crime rates? To protect our city? Many people have said Oakland is a lost cause because people who don't live in, people who don't live in Oakland, people from Hayward or San Jose, quite ironic, because everyone loves Oakland for their culture, for their music, for their parties, for their kickbacks, but no one appreciates how all these secondary events and communities are a result of art and creative activism. If you guys?
Thank you for your comments, your time is up.
Good morning, council members. My name is Miguel Lopez. I work for Peralta Hacienda Historical Park in District 5. I'm here today to implore you to preserve funding for the Cultural Affairs Division and Parks and Recreation Youth Development. These departments are essential to the health and vitality of our city. Without adequate funding for parks and recreation, spaces like Peralta Hacienda will fall into disrepair. Without staff to maintain safety and security, our parks and the neighborhoods around them become less safe for everyone. The Cultural Affairs Division is equally vital. Culture and arts aren't just hobbies, they're an economic driver. Last year, Oakland saw 3.4 million visitors. They spent over $600 million, generating a total economic impact of over $800 million. They supported over 5,500 jobs and generated $90 million in state and local taxes. More than that, they are the soul and are, they are the soul of our city showcasing Oakland's rich diversity and history. These budgets are small compared to other departments, but their impacts are enormous. By preserving them, you are protecting the vibrancy, safety, and identity of Oakland. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, your time is up.
Good morning, my name is Ashara Ikundayo. I'm an artist, a curator, a cultural strategist, and a small business owner living in deep east Oakland in District 7. I also steward the collective called Artist as First Responder, which amplifies and supports artists whose practices heal communities and save lives. Our Oakland-based work happens in collaboration with several Oakland-based cultural institutions such as the Black Cultural Zone, Eastside Arts Alliance, the Black Panther Party Museum, the Oakland Public Conservatory of Music. Many of these organizations have been and are recipients of necessary grants from the Oakland Cultural Affairs Department and utilize these funds to offer essential creative services to children, youth, and adults. I beseech you in your redesign and reallocation of funds that you do not reduce any more funds from cultural affairs, this action would be devastating to the cultural work across discipline, and to be clear, artwork is work. I hire and I pay artists. I am an artist who is paid in the city. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Max Bloom. I live in District 3, so thank you for Counselor Fife and for all of you for your good work for the city of Oakland, especially to Madam President. She said the leadership, that you have to focus on the leadership necessary to make hard choices. We're looking for investments to pay off in the city of Oakland. I'm here to ask that the funds that were allocated for the film incentive program are in fact released as promised by the city of Oakland. We're looking, the presentation we just looked at had presentations about raising sales taxes, making things more expensive for residents, reduction of operations and maintenance, which makes things more difficult for people living in the city, speaking to Counselor Gao's point. I work primarily as a usability consultant, and I think that one of the main things in my job is to make my clients more money. So I think a great solution to not having enough money is to make more money. The ROI on film incentive spend, at least in the city of San Francisco, is you spend $1 and then businesses come in and spend $13.66, that's an ROI.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom, your time is up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Deonte Noble. I've been a part of the Peralta Hacienda Historical Park Program since I was five years old. I'm now 28, I'm directing a program with Peralta Hacienda. What I've learned here about culture, the environment, and history is something I never would have learned anywhere else. In school, I didn't get these lessons, but through the Friends of Peralta Hacienda, I gained self-awareness, emotional intelligence, and a deeper understanding of how to treat others and embrace cultural differences. These are the lessons that help us live together in harmony. This park is more than just a place, it's a living testament to our shared past. Through the efforts of friends, young people get the chance to engage with history in a meaningful way. Our educational programs, hands-on activities, and community events help youth connect with this historical site, fostering pride and a sense of ownership in their heritage. They also encourage critical thinking, creativity, and social responsibility qualities that shape the leaders of tomorrow. Supporting the Friends of Peralta Hacienda is an investment in our youth and our community's future. Let's ensure this vital connection to our past continues to inspire and empower young people for generations to come.
Let me start with the $32 million from Measure U that's supposed to be used for the Lincoln Rec Center. Now, that rec center was agreed upon based on raising the money, but Bass with her favoritism agenda got the money, $32 million, from Measure U. Put that money back into whatever's needed. The Piedmont Library, City of Piedmont Library contract, since 2006, you have not renewed the contract, and the City of Piedmont is paying you whatever they want to use our libraries. Negotiate a contract and get the money that you're owed rather than let them tell you what they're going to pay you. As relates to any of the agenda items, you have to look at the consequence. So when you want to restore the parking enforcement efforts, you took the parking enforcement technicians away from parking to deal with the issue of abandoned vehicles. That's what you were using them for. So you take them away from abandoned vehicles and return them to parking, who's going to deal with these abandoned vehicles? You got to have somebody deal with that. The other thing, when you give the issues related to the police department, you left out that 90 police officers are scheduled to, if they want to, to retire. That's 90 potential officers that we're going to leave. You know, you give information, but you don't give all the information. You talk about the reduction in staff, what about the city administrator having 28 staff members? What about the city attorney having 60 on staff? And look at all of the people up at the top that have all of these administrative staff members that possibly you can reduce. And look at the merger of departments.
Thank you, Ms. Olabala, your time is up.
Good afternoon, community. My name is Jorge Lada. I am the director of the environmental programming with Peralta Hacienda Historical Park, and I work alongside Deonte, ensuring that we can continue offering these programs, which they're not just free nature education programs, they're free resources for the community. We provide breakfast, we provide lunch, we provide groceries for the families, we provide free childcare in the summer for working families. I'm here to implore you all to make sure that the Parks and Rec Department gets the money that they deserve in order to keep these programs running so we can continue serving the community together. Thank you.
Through the chairs, to the members of the public, please wait till your name is called so I can easily manage the time for you. If your name wasn't called yet, please don't step to the podium. If your name was called and you're in chambers, please step to the podium, otherwise we will begin calling more names. Thank you. Calling in more names. In Zoom speakers, we will get to you after we move through the members in the chamber. Alan Doams, Hannah Zockerman, Carolyn Conry, Seth Olier, Indra Mongal, Deborah Vaughn, Michael Branson, Leva Zand, Robert Bedoya, Wendy Peterson, Johnny O'Brien, Dharma Galang, Liz Luke, Steffi, Erin Dignam, Nikki Duenberg, Christian Shoemaker, Demita Lee. Liz Luke, Steffi Erin Dignam, Nikki Duensberg, Christian Shoemaker, Demita Lee, Nikki Duensberg, Jennifer Foster, Nicole Welch, Anwar Barodi, Lindsey Haddix. In order, please state your name for the record before beginning.
Good morning, city council and city of Oakland. Thank you so much for your dedication to Oakland, and we're very pleased to hear that we are focusing on going back to the basics. My name is Dr. Jennifer Tran. I'm the president of the Oakland Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here on behalf of all five chambers of commerce. And we are here because we are concerned about people not coming to Oakland, spending money in Oakland despite the bulk of our revenues generating from taxes, business taxes, as well as property taxes. And at this time of erosion of public trust, we are demanding that our public trust be restored by reapportioning services and resources to essential areas such as public safety, economic workforce development, small businesses, parks, and the arts that bring money to Oakland and redistributing these cuts to administrative waste. At this moment, we need to stop pinning our public safety concerns with social services concerns. We all want a more vibrant and prosperous Oakland, and so that begins with-
Thank you, Dr. Foster. Your time is-
Providing a fair-
Good morning. My name is Hannah Zuckerman. I'm a resident of D2, and I work with Ebase and are partners with Fair Labor Oakland. We want to thank the city council for funding us since 2016 to do outreach and education on Measure FF, which is Oakland's minimum wage in our sick leave laws. We also have a strong partnership with DWS. Wage theft costs workers more money each year than most other crimes combined, yet is the most under-reported and under-investigated crime. This work of, of, uh, this work is part of fighting crime in the city of Oakland, yet is not getting the same funding that the police do. We need to continue to fund the work of flow as, as we are the organizations that low-wage workers trust along with DWS. Without us in the community talking to our workers, we would not have ever known about the $400,000 owed to workers at the Radisson Hotel, and we know this is just the tip of the iceberg. We know that limited enforcement will mean more workers not getting paid their fair wages. We can get creative with increasing fines and fees to increase funding for this work and deter bad employers and increase funding-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up.
Good morning. My name is Roberto Bedoya. I'm the former cultural affairs manager for the city. Before I offer my remarks, I want to thank all of our public servants in the House today, all the elected officials, and all the staff people that are over there who have been working under this stress of trying to figure out how to have, make our city work. I want to speak specifically about the scenario in which the general fund support for our cultural division is projected to be zeroed out. That money is used and matched by our art organizations. Without those funds, the ability to form partnerships with private foundations become, become jeopardized. It's really important that we do not destabilize already a weak and anemic system, so I ask you to reconsider that and as you move forward. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for doing a very difficult job that I don't envy. I appreciate the position you're in. My name is Liz Luke. I am the executive director of Living Jazz, and I'm also the secretary of the Board for California Arts Advocates. I'm here today to request that you do not cancel out cultural funding program grants. This grant funding is necessary, it's critical, and it's, if you were to cut it, it's a penny wise, pound foolish decision. There are studies that show for every dollar spent, that $40 comes back from patrons here. We put on shows because of your grant funding at, at places like the Paramount, which is a city-owned building, and we're able to put on MLK tributes that bring together 3,000 people, and each of those people who come to visit, they come from outside of Oakland, they come from inside of Oakland, and they see Oakland in a positive light. They are buying dinner, they are buying drinks, and they're telling friends about how amazing it is. People make decisions to move to Oakland based on the arts and cultural scene and history, and I encourage you to support that funding. I know that your job is to trim the fat, but please don't dig too deep and cut the heart at the same time. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Carolyn Conry. I'm a longtime resident of District Four and a 17-year member of the fire service in another city. I'm speaking in response to the decision to take vital fire resources off our streets. Your Oakland firefighters don't just provide public safety, they provide economic security. The insurance industry acknowledges this, and so should you. A fully-staffed fire department is the insurance policy that allows people to go to sleep at night and know that when they wake up in the morning, they have a job to go to because it didn't burn down overnight. When you cut fire department resources, more homes burn down, more businesses burn down, jobs are lost, and we lose the engine that drives economic activity in the city, revenue. You're making this decision because you have a revenue problem. Cutting fire resources will only exacerbate that problem. I know you have tough decisions to make. Please make those decisions carefully because your Oakland firefighters can't be in two places at once. Thank you.
Hey there, Seth Olier, Oakland Firefighters, Local 55 Vice President. I can't really say much more than my sister just said there, but I just want to acknowledge a couple of things real quick. The city administrator, you use a term, operational and organizational impact. These are people's lives that we're talking about here. These are houses, businesses, relatives, family, that we are talking about deciding dollars and cents instead of lives. The second thing I want to acknowledge is that I have a lot of members who are off on long-term injury leave, and those are all injuries caused by this profession, by this city. These are not people who are off seeking a free lunch, these are people who have given their backs, their shoulders, or lives for this place. And the last part I'll do here is, I want to look back three people from me at the end of my time, that's when the first fire engine would show up right now, without any cuts, well, besides the cut we already have. When you call the next batch of speakers, after your six or seven proposed closures, that's when the fire engine will show up. So visualize that. I want all of you to hold your breath for that time. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Indra Mongal, and I live in District One, and I work in District Two at the Oakland Asian Cultural Center. I concur, this is a very difficult decision for all of you, but as a concerned Oklander, I implore you to not cut funding for the arts. Arts are vital to our community, to our cities, not only in terms of economics, providing jobs. We know that there are thousands of jobs created every year that generate millions of dollars in, in state and local taxes, but also drawing visitors who each shop and spend millions of dollars a year here. But they're also critical to the health and self-esteem among, among other things. When people see their stories and on our stages, it enhances self-esteem, and it also fosters appreciation of cultural differences. So, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Deborah Vaughn, and I'm the artistic director of Dimensions Dance Theater and also a member of the Malanga Arts Collective. I just want to say that art is essential, and I also implore you to please dig deeply to see how you can help your arts landscape survive. Art is so important to all of our communities and neighborhoods. It's the one entity that brings people together, that helps with community building. It creates hope and leadership in our youth, and it also provides jobs for, you know, many of the artists that are here in the Bay Area. So, many of the artists that are in the Malanga Building have been there for over 50 years. This work has helped other artists, you know, become important in their fields, so it's important to keep this alive. So please, dig deep. Art is important and essential. Thank you.
Hello, members of the council. My name is Stephanie Dignam, a condo owner in District One and a dedicated nonprofit worker currently serving as the development manager for Living Jazz, an organization that helps provide equitable access to music and music education here in Oakland, based in District Three. There have been times in my life where I've made desperate choices, choices I didn't want to make, but I didn't have the options to do otherwise. Music was an anchor that kept me from completely slipping away. Through access to education and the arts, I was able to carve out a path, carve out a path for myself, rising from being a homeless teen to earning a master's degree and establishing roots here in the Bay Area. Research, research supports the power of music. Martin Gardner of Brown University tracked the criminal records of Rhode Island residents from birth through age 30 and found that the more a person was involved in music, the lower their likelihood of having an arrest record. This finding speaks to the ability of music and arts programs to help keep people, especially our youth, on a positive path and away from cycles of crime and incarceration. If we want a safer, more vibrant Oakland, we need to give people options. Stripping away funding for arts and education robs us of, robs us of the tools we need to empower our youth and prevent them from making desperate choices. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Dharma Galang, and I am the development manager at the Oakland Asian Cultural Center. Today, I'm here as a resident of Oakland to voice my concern that due to the current budget crisis, that the city of, city's cultural affairs division will be eliminated. My husband and I have lived in Oakland for a large part of our adult lives, and we are raising our daughter in Oakland. One of the big reasons we continue to choose to raise our daughter in Oakland is because of Oakland's incredible arts and culture. Oakland's arts and culture provides enrichment to our residents, especially our youth, increases civic participation, brings our diverse residents together and creates safe spaces, and helps bring in tourism and new residents to our city. I ask city council to value Oakland's arts and culture in the city's budget. Please do not eliminate the cultural affairs division and its staff. Thank you very much.
Good morning. I'm Johnny O'Brien. I'm the new CEO of Family Bridges. Our Honglock Center has supported Oakland seniors for over 40 years as the only monolingual Chinese-speaking senior center in this, in Chinatown. I urge you to preserve funding for these essential services, which are at risk due to the proposed budget by the city administrator's office on page 46 of Attachment A. These cuts would severely impact Oakland's most vulnerable seniors who rely on critical services that we provide, care, meals, and also social support. As demand grows, we cannot afford to lose this vital funding. Family Bridges has been a trusted partner of the city of Oakland, and so please, I ask for your help to continue providing the care for the seniors that deserves it. Thank you so much.
Madam President?
Yes, to the members.
I didn't want to interrupt the very tall last speaker, but I do want to say to future speakers, you can pull the microphone up to your mouth when you're speaking so we can all hear you better. You don't have to bend down.
My name is Michael Branson. I've worked for the city for five years, and I'm a member of IFPTE Local 21. The current fiscal situation is disappointing and avoidable. Please look at our roadmap to a sustainable budget document. I welcome seeing a more serious effort to rein in police overtime spending, but I want to urge that you insist on greater accountability, including monitoring shift extension overtime. City council made efforts to right-size OPD overtime spending a few years ago. The result was OPD overspending its right-size budget. Now, non-sworn workers, including OPD non-sworn, are proposed to be laid off. OPD's actions are hurting their colleagues in the city as a whole. We want public safety, but all city departments, including OPD, should be subject to review of efficacy and efficiency. Any requests for city unions to make concessions should lead with OPOA coming to the table. Otherwise, you're asking Local 21 and others to make concessions without any confidence that the situation will be any different in a few months. Thank you.
Nicole Welch, and I have time from Demita Lee.
Demita, can you just raise your hand? Thank you.
My name is Nicole Welch. I'm a revenue operation supervisor with the city of Oakland. I've been here for, going on 23 years, January. Déjà vu. 13 years ago, I sat in this same chamber with a different council, then council member Schaaf, council member Brooks, De La Fuente, and a whole host of other people. And these individuals came to us as a union people, and they said, "Help us out. Contribute. Give back." And we did, to the tune of $28 million. And 13 years later, here we are again, and nothing has changed. The last time I was in this chamber, De La Fuente said, "The police need to operate differently. We need to do something differently." At that time, their overtime spending was $30 million. Now we're at $52 million. It is an unending hole. We're tired. We can't function like this. We can't do this any longer. Continuing to do this is madness. We gotta do better. I hope that this council will look at our roadmap and actually follow it, because right now, coming to labor and saying, "Give something up" without a plan is madness, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Wendy Peterson with the Senior Services Coalition. The amended mid-cycle budget, as written, eliminates essential funding for four community-based organizations that thousands of low-income, older Oklanders rely on. The proposed, the proposal zeros out funding for SOS Meals on Wheels, Eden I&amp;R, Mercy Brown Bag, and Family Bridges' Honglock Senior Center. It's funding that they need to deliver services, and they're, the cuts are halfway through the fiscal year. This puts these CBOs at risk, and it would take food and supportive services away from older adults who really need them. The Honglock Senior Center cuts are particularly troubling, targeting the one senior center in Oakland that serves monolingual API seniors. I urge the council to find a way to maintain these services.
Before it begins, I believe my name was called twice, so I'm not sure if I have two minutes or one, but I'll go ahead and get started. Hi, my name is, good morning, my name is Nikki Duensberg. I'm a proud member of IFPTE Local 21. I work for the city as a homeownership programs coordinator, expanding housing opportunities, primarily for low and moderate income fam, families and individuals. Local 21 has presented the city with a plan to close that budget gap. Thank you Administrator Johnson for acknowledging that plan. It outlines up to $200 million in potential savings without sacrificing services and The administration has failed to take all possible actions that could reduce waste and improve revenue. I'm going to touch on the point of controlling executive pay. As the other speaker mentioned, I was one of the people 13 years ago that got the layoff. It's extremely, uh, it's hardship. It's some real hardship. So I'd like to see some balance with, let's look at some of the other people who might have opportunity to reduce pay. Am I getting my second minute? Okay, I'll continue.
No, you only signed up for one item.
Pardon?
I only have you down for one item, so you got one minute.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Foster, and I am a Local 21 ANW chapter president. This process is flawed. We need an open, transparent process. Schedule budget hearings immediately before or in lieu of the 17th. Labor must be at the table before tragic, strategic sessions take place. We have been making recommendations to those on this dais for over a year with very little change. We are unwilling to give any concessions until we start having input into this budget. We need to cut all vacant positions that are funded before you even come to one worker. Also, you need to cut from the top and cut executive- Also, you need to cut from the top and cut executive pay. That's right. And SEIU and Local Twenty-One have police officers doing our bargaining unit work, and we need that back so they can get back to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Calling in the next batch of names. Marjorie Train, Sanika Bryant, Jason Tubbs, Tahon Davis, David Hunt, Amelia Whitely, Julian Ware, Maria Win... Hun, I'm sorry. Triva Hadden, Michael Patterson, Tony Dequipa, Janine Grantham, Tim Dolan, Hawaii Nguyen, Ilana Lipset, Jeanette Estrada, Jose Mondo, Jose Arona, Jose Prado, Maria Jimenez, Dolores Rodriguez... I'm sorry, Maria Dolores Rodriguez. Naleli Alabara Cruz. Please step to the podium. If your name was called in any batches and you haven't spoken, you wish to, please approach the podium. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Maria Win, and I am a proud member of IFPTE Local Twenty-One. I work for the city as a program analyst at Human Services Department. I'm here to speak on the city's proposal to lay off staff positions. On Friday, December sixth, the city administration plans to eliminate ninety-two full-time positions to save roughly six million dollars from the city's one-hundred-twenty-nine-million-dollar budget deficit. We barely can even afford to pay for the basic necessities in life. Is this equity? While supervisors and managers are getting increases every year, not in the hundreds, but in the thousands of dollars, now they plan to lay off staff to save their own jobs. Where is the rational argument to show fair equity? We are working with skeleton crew. Our supervisors and managers are pushing us to do more.
Hi there. My name is Jason Tubbs. I am a gardener crew leader in the Parks Department, and I am also an officer in our local SEIU ten-twenty-one chapter. We are here today to demand no layoffs and to urge council to wait for the independent audit. By doing this, you answer any open questions about the numbers. One of the major cuts in the report is to KOCB. Look behind me, we have part of KOCB here, all of which had to take their own time off to illustrate how serious this is, and we are. Cut waste, not city services. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tahon Davis, and I'm a representative of the Make It Fae Film Representation. I'm going to answer a simple question. Why do we need filmmakers? We need filmmakers because we are the eyes of Oakland. We capture our energy and we transmit it to the world. If you cut out filmmakers and photographers, then you cut out the windows to your entire art scene. Every artist in the Bay Area has relied on a filmmaker or photographer to capture their craft and transmit that message to the world. Every business in Oakland has relied on photographer or filmmaker to capture their services and market that for them. You want people to invest in Oakland, then they need to see it, literally. They need to see First Fridays. They need to see the lake. How will they see it if not through the images and videos captured by your photographers and filmmakers? I know Oakland is drowning, but do not sabotage your own SOS system. That is my time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amelia Whittlesey. I'm the Managing Director at Creative Growth Arts Center Downtown Oakland on Twenty-Fourth Street. We've been there since nineteen-seventy-four, and for the last forty years, we've been funded and supported by the arts and cultures of the city of Oakland. Creative Growth is essentially a supportive space for artists and adults and youth with disabilities. I urge you, council members, to not cut funding to the arts and culture. It puts a lot of spaces like Creative Growth at risk, and where are the artists with disabilities going to go, including the entire artistic and creative community? Thank you.
Good morning, council, and thank you. My name is David Hunt, and I'm the Director with Prescott Circus Theater. And I'm speaking to ask that you please do not cut the funding for cultural arts. Prescott Circus Theater serves over three-hundred children, primarily Black and Latino from underserved communities. About ten to twenty percent have disabilities or learning needs. Three-hundred children, but through our performances and our presence over the past forty years, thousands and thousands of people we touch each year. When families see our kids in the street, they say, "I used to be a Prescott clown." We create... Our organizations with the other ones create a sense of belonging and purpose and meaning for Oakland. Families stay because of these cultural organizations. They raise their kids here because of these organizations. Cutting these cuts the solar plexus out of our city. Twenty-thousand-dollar grant for a four-hundred-thousand-dollar organization is devastating for this year. That's what we're facing if this gets cut. Please don't cut the thread that we're all hanging on. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ilana Lipset. I'm a resident of District One, and I serve as a Commissioner on the Cultural Affairs Commission. And I am here to urge you as well to not cut funding for the Cultural Affairs Division and for arts and culture. I grew up in the suburbs in the East Bay, coming to Oakland for arts and culture. And we know that arts and culture are the beating heart of this city and the reason people come here. Investment... Not spending. Investment in arts and culture is a budget multiplier and a revenue generator and a job creator. As we already heard, last year, we had over three million visitors who come here for our cultural assets, and they spent a total of over eight-hundred million dollars. We heard the sum of the budget priorities are good jobs, healthy economy, public safety, vibrant neighborhoods, and we need arts and culture for all of that. In fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, Cultural Affairs was able to give just under one-point-five-million dollars in grants, and if that's eliminated, the organizations you've already heard from and so many more are not going to be able to keep their doors open. So, please, don't cut funding for the arts. Thank you.
Good morning. Excuse me. Excuse my voice. My name is Michael Patterson. I'm a lead electrician with the City of Oakland. My union is IBW twelve-forty-five. You all know who I am. We've been here before, and here we are again, once again. We just had the same meeting... We should all have lunch. We just had the same meeting in June. It's amazing that we're still here in this situation, no matter the administration, no matter the council members. We're always here, because like Sister Nicole Welch said a few minutes ago, thirteen years ago, we're in the same position. It's always a crisis, and the crisis always comes back to us. It always comes back to us. I guarantee that the people that are making the decisions about who gets cut, I guarantee you, they're not losing their jobs. I guarantee you that. We all work tirelessly also. I heard City Administrator Jink Johnson thanking everybody on the finance team for working tirelessly, and I'm sure they did a great job. But we do that job all the time.
Hey, Seth. Has that first U engine hit yet? That's too bad. Good morning. My name is Julian Ware. I'm a member of Local Twenty-One. I work in the IT Department. I've been with the city for twenty-two years as a spatial data analyst. I work with folks throughout the city to provide data and services to function, and I'm here to speak on the city's proposal slash services and workers who provide them. We've been doing more with less for too long. We're at a breaking point with inadequate staffing. Layoffs only exasperate this problem. We presented the city with a roadmap, Oakland's roadmap to a sustainable budget that outlines two-hundred-million dollars in potential savings without sacrificing services. The city administration has failed to take all possible actions that could reduce waste or improve revenue. For example, the administration has no plan to implement an audit of OPD's overtime. The administration intends to limit certain overtime requiring preapproval, but has no intention of monitoring shift extension overtime, leaving the department's most wasteful spending unchecked. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Miles Markstein. I'm the Development Director of Art Together, nonprofit organization in District Two that brings arts and wellness programs to newcomer refugees and supports refugee and immigrant artists. I know the arts are always the first to get cut whenever the cuts will be made, but please, please do not cut Cultural Affairs. Our organization began in twenty-seventeen with a budget of four-thousand dollars, and Cultural Affairs is there to bring us real resources, help us build us into a one-million-dollar organization that has healthcare benefits, competitive wages, and real jobs for artists. We need Cultural Affairs right now. Arts organizations are dying throughout Oakland, and Cultural Affairs is our lifeline. They bring us grants, connections, a citywide vision, and funding for festivals throughout the city that bring real commerce and real jobs for artists. Artists are leaving Oakland right now, and we aren't getting them back. Finally, we need someone to call when we need to reach out to the city. Cultural Affairs is there when we needed a hundred thousand dollars to get NEA funding to help revitalize Clinton Park, and Cultural Affairs was there every single day to make sure that we put together a good grant. Artists are leaving the city, and arts organizations are dying. Thank you.
Hello. Tony Dequipa. I work in Human Services currently. I've been with the city for nine-and-a-half years, here to speak in support of the Labor Coalition's Roadmap to a Sustainable Future. It's just wild that we're really talking about real human beings potentially losing a job when we have all these vacancies still in this budget. I work in Community Homelessness Services. We do not have a program manager. HSD does not have a department director. Why are we talking about real people losing their jobs when we have so many vacancies in this budget? We know where the overspending is happening. We need to address that. These proposals do not address the overspending crisis, which is really the problem in the city. We also need to review all these contracts. How did Oakland Promise get seventeen million dollars when Head Start only got six million dollars? That is not what voters voted for. We need to collect the revenue that needs to be collected. Thank you for taking positive steps in that direction, and we need...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up.
Hello. I'm going to be translating for the senior.
Okay, just before you begin, so you'll get double the time. She'll have two minutes. I advise that you let her speak for one and then translate after that so she can get her comments out.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es María Esther Jiménez y vivo en el Distrito Siete. Estoy aquí para hablar sobre el punto de agenda número ocho del Centro para Personas Mayores de Fruitvale. Me ayudó a una disputa de setecientos dólares en mi factura de agua. Sin el apoyo del centro jamás habría podido resolverlo sola. Mantener este centro abierto es mantener un lugar de ayuda para trescientas treinta y dos adultos mayores y nuestro refugio para superar re... desafíos y injusticias hacia nosotros. No pedimos que nos den más en este momento difícil, pero sí les rogamos que no nos quiten lo que tenemos. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and transfer. Good afternoon. My name is María Esther. I live in District Seven. I am here to speak about Agenda Item Eight. The Fruitvale San Antonio Senior Center helped me dispute over seven-hundred dollars in a charge of my water bill. Without their support of the center, I would not have been able to resolve this on my own. Keeping this center means maintaining a place of health for over three-hundred and thirty-two seniors, and it's a tragedy to overcome challenges and injustice directed to us. We are not asking for more at this difficult time, but we do beg you not to take away what we already have. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es María Dolores Rodríguez Casillas. Vivo en Oakland, en el Distrito Cinco, y estoy aquí para hablar sobre el punto de número ocho después de sufrir agresión física en la calle de mi salud emocional y física deterioraron. Ser víctima de una violencia es muy traumante. Sin embargo, el Senior Center de la Fruitvale me apoyó, me mejoró mi bienestar emocional, y hasta ahora mis niveles de azúcar disminuyeron. Algo sorprendido. Mi médico se redució a los fondos adultos mayores de la Fruitvale. ¿Perderíamos acceso a comunidad o recursos para sobrevivir? La salud y bienestar de nosotros están en sus manos.
Good afternoon. My name is María Rodríguez de Casillas. I live in Oakland in District Five. I'm here to speak about Agenda Item Eight. After suffering a physical assault on the street, my emotional and physical health deteriorated. Being a victim of violence is very traumatic. However, at the Fruitvale San Antonio Senior Center, they provided me with the support. I improved my emotional well-being, and even my blood sugar levels have decreased, which surprised my doctor. If funding is reduced to the Fruitvale San Antonio Senior Center, access to food and resources needed to survive will be challenging. The health and well-being of hundreds of us are in your hands.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es José Mundo. Vivo en Oakland, en el Distrito Siete. Estoy aquí para hablar sobre el punto de la agenda número ocho. Gracias a Fruitvale San Antonio Senior Center. Tuve mi primera clase de tecnología donde aprendí a usar mi teléfono móvil de manera segura, a tener acceso a lugares donde dan clases de tecnología. Se necesitan para que nosotros podamos protegernos de los estafadores, ya que se aprovechan de las personas mayores. También quiero hablar en nombre de miles de personas que asisten a este centro para llenar aplicaciones de vivienda o asisten para salir de casa para no estar asilados. Les pido que piensen en toda nuestra comunidad. Después de trabajar décadas, queremos envejecer con tranquilidad. Gracias.
Good morning. My name is José Mundo. I live in Oakland in District Seven. I am here to speak about Agenda Item Eight. Thank you to the Fruitvale San Antonio Senior Center. I had my first technology class, where I learned how to use my mobile, my cellphone safely. Access to places that offer technology classes is necessary so that we can protect ourselves from scammers who take advantage of older adults. I also want to speak on behalf of thousands of people who attend to the center, to fill out housing applications or to get out of their house to avoid isolation. I ask you to think of the entire community. After working for decades, we want to age peacefully.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es José Luis Arona. Vivo en Oakland, en el Distrito Tres, y estoy aquí para hablar sobre el punto de agenda número ocho. En Fruitvale San Antonio Senior Center, aprendí a usar el Internet, y gracias a eso puedo seguir mi proceso de mi caso de migración en línea. Este lugar es vital para nuestra independencia. Si disminuyen los fondos para el centro, impactarán a más de trescientas treinta y dos adultos mayores y recursos para sobrevivir como asistencia para aplicar y renovar estampillas. Ayuda para agendar citas médicas, traducciones con aseguranzas que son difíciles de entender como aseguranzas médicas y muchos servicios más que nuestra salud dependen. No nos abandonen. Gracias.
Good morning. My name is José Luis.
Good morning. My name is José Luis Orona. I live in Oakland in District 3. I'm here to speak about Agenda Number 8. At the Fruitvale San Antonio Senior Center, I learned how to use the Internet, and because of this, I can follow the process of my immigration case online. This place is vital for our independence. If the funding is reduced for the center, it will impact more than 332 seniors and resources needed to survive, such as assistance with applying for renewing full stamps, help with scheduling medical appointments, translation for insurances that are difficult to understand, like medical insurances and other services on which our health depends on. Please don't abandon us.
Buenos días. Buenos días. Mi nombre es José Prado. Vivo en la ciudad de Oakland. Estoy aquí para hablar sobre el Distrito 5. Estoy aquí para hablar sobre el punto de agenda del número 8. Entiendo que el tiempo es limitado para explicar todas mis ideas que tengo. Estoy preocupado por reducir los fondos del centro de personas mayores como yo. Significa eliminar el apoyo crucial que nos ayuda a navegar procesos complejos como por ejemplo la solitud de beneficios de discapacidad, beneficios de jubilación, asistencia alimentaria, atención médica. Estos procesos a menudo son difíciles de entender y seguir por nuestra cuenta. Como personas mayores, dependemos de la orientación proporcionada por estos centros para gestionar y sobrevivir. Por ejemplo, con la ayuda de Fruitvale San Antonio Senior Center, pude acceder a $9,000 en fondos por discapacidad que no había podido obtener siguiendo los procedimientos de estas agencias más grandes que me exigían. Nuestra supervivencia depende de las decisiones que tomen ustedes. Muchas gracias.
Good morning. My name is José Prado. I live in Oakland in District 5. I'm here to speak about Agenda Item 8. I understand that the time is limited to explain all my ideas. I am concerned because reducing funding for senior centers means eliminating crucial support that helps us navigate complex processes such as applying for disability benefits, retirement benefits, full stamp assistance, and healthcare. These processes are often difficult to understand and to follow on our own. Our seniors depend on the guidance provided by these centers to manage and survive. For example, with the help of the Fruitvale San Antonio Senior Center, I was able to access $9,000 in disability funds that I would not have been able to obtain by following the procedures required by these large agencies. Our survival depends on your decisions you make. Thank you.
Hello, Tim Dolan. I represent the hardest-working cops here. That's the Oakland Police Department with the Oakland Police Officers Association. Just want to point out that crime is plagued here in the city of Oakland. We're experiencing high crime rates over the past few years, and the city is suffering at the hands of criminals. We cannot allow any further cuts to police services. I've seen a staffing going from 800 down to 600 in the last few years. That's devastating to the community we serve. Thank you, Mr. Guyo, for acknowledging that. I'd also like to point out that my union has been at work 24/7 during the pandemic and on. Weather unions continue to work from home. I'd like to point out that the city has become a model city to what not to do. We have businesses leaving on a daily basis. We've lost In-N-Out, Starbucks, Black Bear, numerous different businesses. And that's just in the community area that I serve alone in East Oakland. We've suffered so much over the last administration, and it's time we turn things around. We invest back into the police department. We need to see more cops on the street.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up. Calling in the remaining names: Jeff Levin, Olivia Kern or Karen, Julian Tasman, Phyllis Hall, Annie Ledbury, Charlie Dieterlein, Sheila Gunn, Vanessa Wang, Philip Greer, Archie Nagrash, Kevin Daly, Kim Olson, Lenora Gunst, Ravi Abharakon, sorry if I said that incorrectly, Dolores Tahada, Andrea Henson, Manny LeRus, Janice Roberts, Lauren Roscoe, Sam Bimpong, Grace Porras, Abad Layu, Jorge Lara. If your name was called at any time, please approach the podium. At this time, all names have been called.
Can I start? Good afternoon. My name is Andrea Henson. I'm the Executive Director at Where Do We Go. I spend my days in the streets of Oakland with homeless communities. I don't understand why we're here. This weekend, Oakland started homeless encampment removals on the weekend. Another notice was posted for next weekend. So I'm watching and I'm hearing that we're having this big budget deficit, but the police can come out and sweep and talk to people all week and long. One of my clients has one leg, is 65, and lives in his car. When we talk about public safety and imminent harm, is he the threat to Oakland? I love what Councilmember Guyo said about where is Oakland going, and I appreciate that Intramaris stepping down, but we need strong leadership because I think if we pay attention, the money is being spent in weird ways. The people who have no money are the ones who will be paying these parking fines to restore the budget. Everyone who's living in their RVs, who right now, they don't buy new clothes, they don't go buy new things, they don't have heat. When you're poor, you cut off the heat and you open up the oven, you go and buy clothes from Goodwill. That's who we're going to punish right now? Something is not right. People are asking for jobs. They don't have jobs. They're being threatened. But where the money, the money's not going where it's supposed to go. There was an ERF grant that Oakland was granted for $7.2 million to sweep three encampments and give those folks permanent housing. When I went to that eviction this year, none of those folks got that money. $7.2 million. So where is the money going? When we're talking about letting people go, when we're talking about getting rid of Head Start for the babies, the money is being spent. But I'm out every day and on the weekends, and the people who are getting punished are the ones who have made the sacrifices, the ones who don't have new clothes and nice things. Perhaps the city should take a note from Tupac, because all of us out in the streets know how to make a dollar out of 15 cents. That's what they're doing.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up.
I just got to say yes to that. Hello, I'm Sam Bimpong. I'm here as a co-director of Make It Bay and as a citizen of Oakland, and I'm here to implore you to vote to amend the 2425 budget, to reinstate the revenue from the sale of the Coliseum, and allocate those funds to fund the, to allocate full funding for the Oakland Film Rebate Project and the Cultural Affairs budget. It is both strategic and necessary to allocate these one-time funds towards proven revenue-generating programs like the Film Rebate Program. Without fostering such economic drivers, our cities' financial challenges and the public safety issues tied to them will only continue to deepen. Failure to act will not only forfeit the tens of millions of dollars in already committed funds to be spent here in Oakland through letters of intent from production companies looking to take advantage of this rebate, but it will also damage Oakland's credibility, making it far more difficult to attract future productions and investments. Oakland cannot afford to miss this opportunity.
Good morning. I'm Grace Porras. I'm here to represent the East Bay Film Collective and Make It Bay. We find ourselves in a situation we've discussed for years, one that has yet to produce meaningful solutions. Today, I'm here to urge you to adopt a proven strategy for generating tax revenue, TV, and film production. As soon as the county approves the reassignment of the Coliseum, we strongly advocate for reinstating funding for the Film Rebate Program and not to cut Cultural Affairs budget. We have letters of intent from productions that are ready to invest in this program, bringing tens of millions of dollars into our local economy and shifting the narrative around economic growth in our region. Don't forget what this program represents: job creation, local spending, increased tourism, and narrative shift. Change is needed and required, so we don't find ourselves here in the same situation time and time again. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Phyllis Hall. I'm the Director of the Center for Artists Team. Good morning, council members. This has been a long and a hard morning, but I also want to join others in saying that we urge you not to cut the arts programs that help support about 50 organizations. They provide cultural enrichment for students, families, and communities in the city. Arts organizations and festivals are critical for drawing visitors and to celebrate learning, eating, shopping, living, laughing, having fun in the city of Oakland. We need to keep these diverse arts creativities in our schools and communities. Now that the Major League sports teams are gone, our arts, our cultural activities are the strongest asset that we have. We want to make the news because we are talking about the cultural growth and development of Oakland and not the crime. We want our students to grow, live, and have pride in the city that they live in, and want to stay, live, and grow here.
I am Julian Taizan, Animal Control Officer, 10 years, city of Oakland, proud SEIU 1021 member and shop steward. The budget cuts that include staffing cuts is unacceptable. Cut waste, not services. In 10 years, the budget cycles, seven animal control officer positions have been cut and/or frozen, taking the department down to five working officers with one solo officer working by themselves citywide every day. Vehicles are part of public safety, which I've heard several people say. However, we have 20-year-old-plus vehicles in our department that break down on the highway and at red lights. With deceased animals are now sitting for weeks at a time, not being picked up regardless if they're paid pickups or not. Intake for animals continues to increase due to the unhoused, due to bike cases, animal cruelty cases, yet this city is not funding the animal shelter enough to provide food and vaccines, which we have to borrow from other agencies and outside entities. This budget cycle is literally like robbing Peter to pay Paul and rob Peter again. We are Peter. It's time to start finding ways to give back to the employees and back to the city of Oakland.
Good afternoon. My name is Annie Ledbury. I'm an Oakland citizen working at the intersection of community development and building creative people power at the East Bay Asian Local Development Corporation. My council member, Noel Guyo, asks what vision we should invest in during this difficult time. Please invest in artists and creatives as key strategic collaborators to envision those solutions for a healthy, vibrant, safe future alongside all the other essential elements of this city. Preserve funding for Cultural Affairs for the spirit, radical imagination, and belonging in Oakland. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Vanessa Wong, Cultural Affairs Commission, resident of D6. I just wanted to say that the zeroing out of the general purpose fund allocation for arts grants results in basically a de facto elimination of the Cultural Affairs Division. This is the heart of the work, and it is not just the division, but more importantly, the organizations and the people who have built their organizations for years in this city. So a cost savings is actually a huge elimination of the assets and the cultural heritage of our city. And so I really urge you to think about what does equity really mean? What does well-being mean? What is, how is it built? How is community built? It's built through our culture, and we need it now more than ever to be resilient, to face all of the challenges that we have. So thank you very much for your difficult work.
Hello, my name is Kim Olson, and Charlie Dieterlein has graciously ceded his time to me as well.
Charlie, can you...
Thank you. Hi, I am a resident of District 2 and the Director of Advocacy for SOS Meals on Wheels. On behalf of Meals on Wheels and the over 1,400 seniors that we serve in Oakland each year, I beg you not to sacrifice these senior services for these budget cuts. We rely on city contract funding to help deliver over 880, excuse me, 280,000 nutritious meals to homebound seniors each year. In the city's administrators' report, we have two line items that are singled out. Both are under our Measure BB paratransit funding, that's $300,000, and then an additional $150,000 amendment. This piece, we think, is crucial and should also be kept in. Cutting these contracts will mean a drastic reduce in the lifeline services that we provide. We're at a crisis right now. Nearly 40% of older adults are food insecure, and seniors are the largest growing segment of the homeless population. For the first time in our history, SOS has had to force to create a wait list for seniors asking for our services. Now is not the time to cut back on funding. No additional help is going to come from the federal level. If we want to be the kind of community where Oaklanders can age with dignity in their homes, we have to come together and make that happen. I'll say we are also recipients of SSB funds, and those funds are crucial for adding an additional support to clients who are diabetic or prediabetic. We provide healthy staffs, decreasing instances of low blood sugar, increasing hydration, and maintaining long, healthy lives. These are long-term, sustainable investments that lead to cuts in healthcare costs and prevent homelessness long-term. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lenora Gunst, and I chair the Mayor's Commission on Aging. I too want to preface my comment and acknowledge Councilmember Guyo. You don't have to do a demographic study to see and recognize that our population in Oakland is aging. We are currently 27% of the population of Oakland, and by 2050, we will be north of 30%. So this is the area and the population that we need to be investing in. And I'd also like to just say that vying for funds against our community support and safety partners, the Oakland Fire Department and the Police Department, just feels competitive and horrible. Here's a fact: 44% of the emergency callouts that required transportation in fiscal '23-'24 were made by seniors. So to cut senior services, it's only going to increase the pressure and demands on our community safety partners. And so with that, I also want to mention that we need to support our seniors in the budget. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Olivia Kane. I'm a District 3 resident. I'm an employee of the City of Oakland Parks Recreation and Youth Development Department, and I'm a proud member of SEIU 1021. I understand that the budget situation is complicated, but the solutions being proposed aren't adequately focused on where the problem is coming from proportionately. Administrative bloat and waste by very specific departments are responsible for a substantial share of the budgetary issues we're facing, so we appreciate the changes being proposed on those fronts. However, those problems are large enough that cuts to essential services should not be happening at all. We need to be talking about cost effectiveness. Voters are obviously very concerned about public safety, and I respect all the council members' commitment to this issue. But some of the most potent amelioration of violence is happening under departments like the one I work for. Youth development is violence prevention, and we're doing more on that front for a lot less money. So why is the city considering cuts to services directly connected to public safety, of which my department is only one example, when an already limited number of workers are providing these services while in many cases not even making a...
Good afternoon, council members. Thank you for your service today. I'm Dr. Angela Wellman, the founding director of the Oakland Public Conservatory of Music, founded 20 years ago. I'm here to just simply urge you, you know, not to cut one dime from our Cultural Affairs. I honestly really can't, I'm trying to wrap my mind around the fact that you, as human beings, could even consider cutting our cultural funding budget. As you have heard today by my colleagues here, how essential it is to the life of our city. The arts make us human and keep us connected to our humanity. OPC has offered free music education and access to music education for Black and Brown kids who needed the money. kids who needed the most. So I urge you to really think about it and sleep on this, and wish you good sleep because you're going to say, let's not do it. Thank you.
Good morning, council. My name is Janice Roberts, Director of Mercy Brown Bag and longtime District Two resident. Mercy Brown Bag, as I believe you know, is focused on feeding low-income, older adults in Oakland. Today, we feed over five thousand of these seniors twice a month with bags of fresh, healthy groceries. We are the grateful recipients of sugar, sweetened beverage funding. It's the only money we get from the city of Oakland. I believe this is a perfect fit because voters such as myself voted yes on HH, intending those taxes to cover community health. Early this year, we received a letter committing to a grant beginning in July, and we have continued in good faith to deliver our services. We are projected to deliver seventy thousand, yes, seventy...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up. Moving to the Zoom speakers, starting with James Birch. I have you with two cards. Please unmute yourself and begin your comments. James Birch. James Birch, we will come back to you. Moving to the next speaker, Vanessa Riles. You also have two cards. I have you for two minutes. Please begin your comments.
Thank you so much.
Vanessa, if you are speaking, we cannot hear you. Okay, Vanessa and James Birch, we will come back to you. Jeff Levin, I have you with one card. Please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Jeff Levin, speaking for East Bay Housing Organizations. You're going to hear from other affordable housing folks more generally. I want to speak specifically to the proposal to unrestrict five point seven seven million in so-called boomerang funds from Fund eighteen seventy and transfer that to the general fund. We really want to make sure that this is an emergency measure, not a precedent for future raids on affordable housing. And, you know, we certainly appreciate any limitations on this in the future. Our preference is to see it not happen at all. I would like to ask that staff explain how it is that there is a fund balance of nearly six million dollars here, and are we certain that these funds are not in any way earmarked or allocated or committed in ways that aren't yet encumbered in the system but are pledged? We need to know that we're not cutting or defunding anything. And if there is a fund balance, how did it happen that we have so much? Because it's our understanding that the city has been committing those fund balances as rapidly.
Thank you for your comments. Robert Prince, you are next. Please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hello, my name is Robert Prince. As a board member of Walk Oakland, Bike Oakland, I want to speak in support of retaining a fourteen thousand dollar cultural festival grant program award to the annual East Oakland Futures Fest event on Ninetieth Avenue. This was the top-scoring application this cycle, but now the entire program's general purpose fund allocation is proposed for elimination. I encourage the city to be more precise in these actions and avoid wholesale program eliminations. I also want to warn to the highest extent possible against proposed recombining of the Department of Transportation and Public Works. As someone who's been involved with this work since well before Oak Dot was formed in 2017, I can attest that so much of the city's innovations since then would not have been possible without an independent DOT. If a conversation about the organization of DOT in Public Works is to happen, let's initiate that in the new year and involve our new council members. Please do not approve such a drastic proposal to move forward today without more collaboration and consideration first. Thank you.
Carol Core, you are next. Please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, hi. Good afternoon. I'm Carol Core. I'm a proud East Oakland District Seven resident. I'm speaking on behalf of CHCC, a Bay Area affordable housing developer. We're also an East Bay housing organization member. So regarding Agenda Item Eight, proposed amendment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund ordinance, we, well, the City of Oakland does not allocate any general fund money for affordable housing, and redevelopment funds are the only sources dedicated to affordable housing. And importantly, it's the only flexible funding that can be used for expenses other than capital improvements, like homelessness prevention and eviction protection. And then there's the five point seven million in boomerang funds being discussed today for reallocation. It must not already have been committed or programmed for housing-related projects or programs. The city must evaluate its priorities in future budget cycles and prioritize...
Thank you for your comments. Courtney Powell, please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Good afternoon. My name's Courtney Powell, and I'm the Policy Manager at Resources for Community Development. I'm here today to talk about the decision to allocate nearly six million of boomerang funds from affordable housing programs. And I understand that there may be a motion to restrict the allocation to half of the available balance, which we definitely support. As the previous speaker mentioned, these redevelopment funds are an important source of flexible affordable housing funds, because unlike bonds, they can be used to support non-capital expenditures. I just wanted to raise and moderate three concerns related to the rededication of the funds. First, please ensure that this does not affect the city's pro-housing designation with state HCD, as this is one way that you can earn points in that program. Second, ensure that funds have not been committed or programmed for housing projects or programs. And third, please make this a one-time reallocation that can be replenished when the budget situation improves. Thank you.
Lindsay Haddix, please unmute yourself and begin your comments. After that will be Anwar. After that, Brooke Levin. Lindsay, go ahead and begin.
Hi, this is Lindsay Haddix, Executive Director, East Bay Housing Organizations. I am ceding my time to my coworker, Dolores Tahada.
Thank you. Anwar, you are next.
Good afternoon. I'm Anwar Peroudi, Chair of Oakland's Commission on People with Disabilities. I'm skeptical of remerging Oak Dot with Public Works. Their separation has allowed Oak Dot to be more specialized and focused on traffic safety, innovative design, and accessibility. It has given leadership and staff more time and resources to do outreach and collaborate with our most vulnerable communities, including those my commission represents. Those innovation scenes that I have observed have come from the split between Oak Dot and Public Works being incomplete. Right now, they awkwardly share custody over many projects with design, contracting, and construction being split between the two, doubling bureaucracy and increasing costs, as one example. Separate the two properly, give Oak Dot full jurisdiction over Oak Dot projects, streamline contracting and hiring, and don't damage our ability to reach ADA compliance, which Oak Dot has helped us do tremendously. Finally, I want to echo Wendy Lenore and the many others in the Senior Services Coalition and beyond in strongly opposing the loss of funding of those CBOs serving our most vulnerable seniors, as well as the many here today opposing the loss of funding to our senior centers. Thanks.
Brooke Levin, you may begin. After Brooke, we have Triva Haddon and Sheila Gunn.
Thank you, members of the council and administration. I just have a few things I'm going to fit into my one minute. The first is the move of forty-four, from forty-four hundred to the LAD of one million four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in water use costs. The LAD can only fund water use costs at parks and recreation facilities or landscape assets in the city, and that has been historically coming out of the LAD. So I don't know what this one point four two seven million is, and I have not been able to receive that information from anything in the packet. It's very important that that LAD money is being used legally for the LAD appropriate uses under state law. Secondly, the reorganization proposal. I'm not opposed to the two entities coming back together. However, the name "transportation and infrastructure" totally disappears Public Works, and I don't think that that reflects what is actually happening in the department. Thank you.
Triva, go ahead and begin.
Good morning. Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. My name is Triva Haddon. I'm a local 21-union member and a dedicated employee for the past nine years. I serve as an ethics investigator for the Public Ethics Commission, and I'm addressing the proposed cuts to vital services and the hard-working staff who provide them. My department's workload is unsustainable, given our current staffing levels, with many of us performing the duties of two to three roles. These conditions make it challenging to effectively investigate complaints and maintain the level of transparency that the residents of Oakland expect and deserve. It's concerning that the city is considering further reductions when our workforce is already operating beyond capacity. Budgets are a reflection of our shared values. Balancing the city's budget through cuts to workers and essential services is not a sustainable or equitable solution to address the consequences of fiscal management. Again, this is fiscal mismanagement. It's time to prioritize.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Sheila Gunn. After that, Kevin Daly, Lauren Roscoe, and Prescott Chair. Sheila, you may begin.
Sheila Gunn, I work for the Center for Independent Living as the Emergency Preparedness Coordinator. I am also a musician and a jewelry designer, a person with multiple disabilities, and I work with older adults and people with disabilities. I'm very concerned that the sweet and sugar tax is being shifted to the general fund, and I drink a fair amount of soda, and I want to make sure that these systems are still available for folks. When we take away infrastructure that allows people to maintain their health, the health impacts get exponentially outsized, and that means more urgent care, more emergency visits, more big troubles that we don't need. And so I would like to make...
Thank you for your comments. Kevin, you may begin. Kevin, if you are speaking, we cannot hear you. We'll come back to you. Lauren Roscoe, you are next. Please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you so much. My name is Lauren Roscoe, and I am speaking with the East Bay Film Collective just to urge council members to not cut the budget for arts and cultural programming activities as they make Oakland the lively city that it is, and to make sure that the budget for the Make It Bay Film Rebate Program is reinstated as it will bring positive impact to our economy through increased revenue and encourage long-term investment in our city, especially considering that there are already productions willing to spend millions of dollars that have already written letters of intent with expectations to participate in this program. So please, I urge you to not cut that budget, as arts and cultural programming is a necessity for all of us artists here living in Oakland. Thank you so much.
Ravi, you are next. Please begin your comments.
Hi, my name is Ravi Abkarian. I am the Director of Oak Town Jazz Workshops, and with the support of the City of Oakland, we were celebrating our thirtieth anniversary last month. I am speaking to urge you not to eliminate funding to the Cultural Affairs and the Cultural Funding Program. The funds that arts organizations receive from the City of Oakland is valuable far beyond the dollar amount. Private foundations gauge the value of the work that we do by the support we receive from government agencies, and eliminating support from the City of Oakland would jeopardize other funding streams. Not only is the work that we do an investment in the future with the young people that many arts organizations serve, but we're based in Jaclyn and Square, and we directly see the impact the arts and cultural programming has on visitors and tourists bringing money.
Dolores Tahada, you are next, and I'm just noticing, I mean, saying you have time from Lindsay. You have two minutes. Please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you. This is Dolores Tahada, Director of Organizing with East Bay Housing Organizations. Despite being a top priority for Oaklanders based on the city's own survey, the city budget has historically allocated nearly no general fund money to housing. Boomerang funds, which were originally earmarked to make up some of the low and moderate income housing funds that were lost when redevelopment was terminated, is the only flexible funding that can be used for expenses other than capital improvements, like homelessness prevention and eviction protection, in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. As part of the People's Budget Coalition, EHPH has fought literally every budget cycle since the creation of Boomerang Fund to ensure that these funds are not touched and remain used for its intended purposes. The five point seven seven in Boomerang Funds being discussed today for reallocation must not already have been committed or programmed for housing-related projects or programs. If the sale of the Coliseum goes through, or there is another way that the budget, that more money comes in, a priority for those funds must be affordable housing, including replenishing any Boomerang Funds that are being reallocated. This must also be a one-time reallocation, as the city needs to develop a sustainable solution to solving the current and future budget challenges. The City of Oakland must evaluate its priorities in future budget cycles and prioritize affordable housing through additional fund dedication. Thank you.
Prescott Chair, do you wish to address the council? Please unmute yourself and begin your comments. Coming back to James Birch, you also have two minutes. Please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Over the last several decades, failure to address one-sided contract provisions in the OPOA MOU have led us to the point where police total pay is out of control. Let me read you some salaries and overtime numbers. Timothy Dolan, who spoke earlier, made one fifty-eight thousand in base pay and three hundred and seventy-one thousand in overtime pay in 2023. Scott Besner made one hundred and eighty-three thousand in base pay, two hundred and sixty-four thousand in overtime. There's a lot more numbers that are very similar. Hector Jimenez made one hundred and thirty-six thousand in base pay and three hundred and seven thousand in overtime pay. Most of the numbers look like this, and as a result, we pay lieutenants an average of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand in 2023, sergeants three hundred thousand, officers two hundred and sixteen thousand. Sergeant Francisco Negrete, OPD's highest-paid officer in 2023, made over six hundred and four thousand dollars, costing taxpayers nearly nine hundred thousand dollars in total pay and benefits. Why is this happening? One reason is that we failed to change extremely police-favored compensation time and overtime practices. As a result, police are allowed to accumulate ungodly amounts of compensation time and overtime. And because of this, we estimate that OPD average take-home pay is in the top zero point five percent of all police departments across the country. This is well documented in city audits in 2015, 2019, and again in 2024 in the audit recap. The problem is even documented in the supplemental report provided by finance staff late last week stating that there's a dire need to backfill scheduled field positions due to comp time requests. To put it simply, we can't pay for much-needed programming like Head Start, community ambassadors, violence prevention, DWS, and more if we're paying the police nearly four hundred million per year. A great first step towards addressing our untenable policing budget is to close the contract loopholes named above. Artists and violence interrupters shouldn't be getting laid off so officers can take home over a half a million dollars per year, most of that in overtime. Thank you.
Coming back to Vanessa Riles, please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hello, city council, staff, and those gathered. My name is Vanessa Riles. I'm an Oakland native and current resident. I live in D four, I work in D two, and I go to church in D three. The City of Oakland may not officially and technically be in a fiscal state of emergency, but the state of our city's budget is emergent and urgent. It is a mess. I think that we all understand that it is impossible for us to continue as we have been. Change is inevitable. City council members, you who have the power to make decisions that impact the lives of every single person who lives, works, owns a business or owns property in Oakland, I'm asking you to respond to this emergency in a grounded and centered way, with a loving heart, and by prioritizing the well-being of those suffering the most and those most directly impacted by the potential loss of jobs and services. I'm asking you to center and prioritize the needs of Black folks, BIPOC folks, and folks with little to no money, resources, or access to services. I'm asking you not to react to this state of emergency with fear, pride, or resentment. I'm asking you to respond to this emergency together with humility, compassion, and a spirit of Ubuntu. I'm asking you to make decisions that are risky and that they do not repeat what is going to make an immediate and drastic... an immediate and drastic- I messed up. I'm asking you to make decisions that are risky and that they do not repeat what has been done and has not worked. I'm asking you to think about what is going to make an immediate and drastic difference now and for the next six months. Maybe there is an option that is a combination of options 1, 2, and 3 presented by the Administrator's Office and putting pressure on the county to reassign their property agreement with the A's to AASCG so that they can pay the city. Let us fully consider where can we invest that will keep the most jobs and services intact and keep people safe from harm. 92 FTE positions, DVP, DWS, Public Ethics Communion, those are places that-
Thank you for your comments. Your time was up. Going to Carla Guerrero. Please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I'm Carla Guerrero on behalf of the Unity Council. I'm going to be quick, I know, because of time. My comment is in regards to Boomerang Funds discussed today for reallocation. My only comment is that they must not already have been committed or programmed for housing-related projects and be a one-time reallocation that can be replenished once the Coliseum sale goes through. Please also preserve the cultural funding. According to your Belonging in Oakland Cultural Development Plan developed back in 2018, organizations and businesses of Oakland's arts and cultural economy generate $390 million in gross sales, just like Dia de los Muertos brings 100,000 people from all over the state to Oakland to boost, you know, the economy here. That translates to taxes. If any funds are cut, this is to be replenished as well. Thank you.
Coming back to Kevin Dally. Please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hi, this is Kevin Dally. I'm a board member of Transport Oakland, living in District 4. Councilmembers Bass and Galio have brought up important to public safety, and traffic safety is a part of that public safety. The Department of Transportation has been making traffic safety for Oakland since it was separated from the Department of Public Works. Councilmember Galio was correct. When Transportation and Public Works were combined in the past, we had a low priority for traffic safety, active transportation, and transit infrastructure. Since Transportation separated from Public Works, Oakland has made progress on all of these topics. Oakland has 30 deaths a year due to traffic collisions. We need to decrease the carnage. Best way is to increase- Traffic safety is to keep transportation strong and independent from Public Works. Also, let's keep East Oakland future best.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, all names have been called. Once again, if you're in the chambers and you wish to speak, and your name was called, please approach the podium. If you're on Zoom and your name was called and you still wish to speak, please raise your hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you all for the comments, both this morning and other comments we received via email and previous meetings, and I'm sure we'll have even more comments, additional comments in our subsequent meetings this month. Councilmember Kaplan, you have your hand raised?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Go ahead at this time. Thank you so much. It's a great pleasure hearing everybody's commitment and strong comments and the importance of so much that goes on in our community. Just first, just a process point, and thank you to our attorneys who have clarified that any suggestions regarding any department combinations do not need to be scheduled as separate items, but rather they are mentioned in the budget report, and so they can be submitted as supplementals to the main budget item and do not need to be scheduled as a separate item. So I am no longer requesting the scheduling of separate item, and any consideration of any of the department mergers that have been discussed can and would be undertaken under the main budget item, where they would then be essentially a policy direction to undertake that work and come back to council with a formal ordinance. So wanted to clarify that. And then, just in terms of, there were some questions about what is the long-term vision, and how can we get out of these ongoing problems of not enough revenue coming in that were asked both by members of the public and a couple of my colleagues. And I think it is important that we continue to work on building our local economy and building our local development. And one of the things we learned at the Finance Committee meeting is that our property tax is one of the most stable sources of ongoing revenue, and that by building new developments on properties that are not currently generating, we can add more housing, we can add more jobs, and we can also add to our long-term fiscal stability. So making sure projects that are pending and proposed for places like West Oakland Bart and Coliseum Bart, and the work that is already begun around the Lake Merritt Bart Station and other places like that, not only improves quality of life for the surroundings, but it also improves the city's own fiscal picture for the long term. So I will look forward to continuing to work on these two categories of items as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. Appreciate that. So we will not be entertaining your separate scheduling motion. There's no need for that any longer. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, now we have, we've heard public comment, we have a staff report and the PowerPoint presentation relating to the staff report. We know the challenges before us, so I'm opening the floor to any questions or comments, clarifications, or recommendations. I have a few things. I also say, necessarily, as happens every two-year cycle and mid-cycle needs, budget needs, the City Council President and three other council members form a budget team, or a budget adjustment team, whatever the case may be, and work with the Administrator, and so by just the very nature of that required process, those council members who are part of the budget team with the Council President will understandably have more background, more details, more advanced knowledge of all these things that are being proposed. And the other council members, you know, still read what's going on and get information, but are not going to quite have as much information. Therefore, it's very common and expected that the four members of the council who are not on the budget team at any given point in time will likely have more questions and more things to say during the public meetings. That's just the way it goes, and today is likely no different. Anyone want to start? I'm happy to start. I'm chairing, Councilmember Fife.
I'm sure I'll have additional questions, but I did have some clarity. I'm not sure if our Police Chief is here. I had some questions about public safety. But before I start, I want to just speak to the Oakland Police Officers Association. I think it's in the city's best interest that we come with a spirit of unity, but by saying that city workers have stayed home, when I know for a fact that 10-to-1 workers, especially around illegal dumping, did not take time off at all, is not the direction we want to go in. I know people have strong feelings from whatever positions they're in, but I think this particular moment, as we know our bond agencies are watching, it's imperative that we figure out how to speak with a unifying perspectives and tell the truth just about what's happening here. I did want to ask through the chair to the chief a few questions about the public safety system because it was stated in our presentation from our city administrator that there will be some changes being made. So I want to be clear that the budget adjustments make sure that patrols remain fully staffed. Did I hear that correctly? Did I read that correctly?
Through the chair, yes, ma'am.
So the budget, so the patrols and all of the beats will be covered?
Yes. What we're doing is, each year, we have a yearly draft. And one of the things that we are looking at this year, because we are in the contingency budget and we are slowly attritioning down, as of today, we have 674 members that are fully certified law enforcement officers on our department. But as we attrition down, we're going to have to move people to patrol. Because the draft is coming up, one of the things that we're going to do is we're going to identify approximately 20 to 30 police officers and seven to 10 sergeants to participate in this draft that we're going to have in a few weeks. So when those vacancies occur, they move over and fill those vacancies to keep patrol full.
So typically, and historically, those special units in some other spaces have been utilizing overtime to ensure that beats are covered. Will overtime be used when these officers get moved over to patrol?
So there's been quite a bit of discussion here in regards to overtime, and if you'll allow me, I want to kind of put a little clarity to that piece specifically. There's overtime in regards to certain special events, and there's overtime which are extensions of duty. Extensions of duty are a police officer is out on a call, whether he's taking a report, whether there's sitting on a crime scene or anything like that, to where we can't say, "Stop, you have to go home right now." That is an extension of duty. Those type of uses of overtime are calculated and included in our request for overtime expenditures. There's other overtime that is generated throughout the year based on different events occurring. I'll give you a prime example. This year, we had the national election of the President of the United States. Because we have seen historically throughout Oakland and throughout the United States, there's certain protests occur, we staffed up for that particular event for a couple of days. Those type of events draw specifically on overtime. And the two days that we staffed up for those events, you know, were in the hundreds of thousands of dollars because we were ready for anything that kicked off in Oakland in regards to civil unrest or protests, or peaceful protests for that matter. So when you look at our overtime, those are two specific things. Then there are different requests throughout the city for events that are occurring, whether it be a festival, whether it be an event in the park, whether it be something within each of the individual councils districts that says, "Hey, we need something to occur over here." And that overtime, and sometimes overtime is used for that. One of the things that I think is important is the use of the overtime and the overtime budget. This particular, it was $52 million. These budgets are because we do not have the staffing to properly man these events on a regular shift. If Oakland had the number of officers that it probably needs, it definitely needs, it drastically needs, then you wouldn't have to schedule all of these events on overtime. So I think it's important for our community to understand that that $52 million is a decision that is based on the cost of what it would cost to put a police officer on duty full-time, an FTE, versus paying the cost to handle that business on overtime. A couple of weeks ago, our budget team explained to this council that to hire a police officer full-time on duty is 80 cents on the dollar versus having an officer plan to do that particular event on overtime, which is 50 cents on the dollar. So there's the decision that's being made that is being lost in some of this conversation about the police need to stay within their overtime budget. The overtime is there because things are being scheduled, our normal work. Normal duties are being scheduled to be performed on overtime.
I'm going to let that marinate for a little while.
It's a lot. It's a lot, and it needs to marinate. Yes, ma'am.
So what is happening to ceasefire? Will ceasefire be touched with the changes, any amendments that are being made in the proposal?
In and of itself, ceasefire will not go away. The duties and responsibilities of our ceasefire team will not go away. There are members within that ceasefire unit that are going to bid. I am working with Brooklyn Williams to make sure that we don't drastically affect what's going on. But what we're talking about is taking two people from one team over here, a couple of people from SRS 2, and some people from the gang unit. Not decimating ceasefire in any way, shape, or form. So we're going to maintain what we're doing with ceasefire and hopefully maintain the decreases we're seeing in the crime reduction.
And can you speak a little bit about investigations as well? Like, how will investigations be impacted, if at all?
Well, when we have these folks draw and push them back to patrol, and we're hoping that, well, we're not hoping, what's going to occur is, again, as the city administrator talked about, going back to basics. We're going to focus on patrol, investigations, and officer accountability. So some of these officers will be able to then bid to go to vacant investigative positions, and a couple of sergeants, two sergeants will actually go to our Internal Affairs Bureau to help with officer accountability. So we're pulling these folks from other units to, one, make sure we're staffing patrol, and we can do it without the use of overtime, or reducing the use of overtime, but we're also plugging some gaps in our investigative and our police accountability areas.
Could you just, and this is my last question to President Bass, could you define a little bit more of what officer accountability means? Does that mean reviewing how overtime requests are made, or is that personnel or something else?
No, in our Internal Affairs Unit, we get complaints in regards to officer conduct, whether it be a civilian professional position or a police officer. All these cases have to be investigated. And when you talk about some of the other domino effects that occur because cases are waiting to be looked at from our Internal Affairs Unit, everyone is understaffed, just like all of the other departments throughout the city. We're understaffed as well in all those other units. So by pulling these 20 to 30 folks, police officers, and potentially 10 sergeants back into the three main areas, we're going to help each of those three areas staff up a little better. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I want to do a time check. We are going to lose our forum at 2:00 unless some of us are creative in managing our meetings. And I just want to say, after we hear the council member questions, there is one item, which is an ordinance that requires two readings, where I do want to see if we can take the first vote today, and then the second and final vote will be on the 17th. And that is the ordinance regarding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and allowing funds to be distributed upon a declaration of extreme fiscal necessity. And there is also the Capital Improvement Project item, which I hope that we can at least introduce when Councilmember Kaplan is still with us before 2:00. Okay, we have Councilmember Kalb, and then Galio.
Thank you. K-Top, can you get my microphone working? Is that 1-2, testing 1-2? They're working? Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, and everybody. I'll get quick to my questions and thoughts in no particular order. On Fund 1870, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I will have an amendment that I'll be proposing that I've been discussing with City Attorney and Finance Department to protect half, in future years, to protect half of these funds, so-called Boomerang Funds, going forward. It doesn't impact the need or what is being asked for now in this fiscal year, but in future years, I don't want to give away or have the potential of giving away the entire Boomerang pot for affordable housing. Affordable housing is a priority, and we need to keep it. So I'll read those amendments into the record when we, that amendment into the record when we get to that item. Second, I have a question about the police academies. Through the chair to the City Administrator or Finance Department. If I understand correctly, there's an academy going on now that will graduate very soon. There is an academy being proposed to be eliminated that would have been starting very soon. And then there's another academy also proposed to be eliminated that was going to start sometime in March or thereabouts. Is that about right? To anybody? Through the chair, yes.
Okay, so I understand that the first of the two academies that are being proposed to be eliminated, which is hard to digest, sort of, it also would involve new officers graduating and therefore having to pay for them possibly in this fiscal year. But the second or the final academy that was going to start in this fiscal year, approximately in March, or could be April if we choose to, won't add any new officers until later, but, because academies take six months. We all know that. We all know that. So I'm wondering, how much is being proposed to be quote-unquote "saved" by getting rid of this third, this final academy that was going to start in March? What's the dollar amount that we're proposed to save? And if we restored that academy but started in April, what would be the financial impact of that to OPD and the Finance Department?
Through the chair. With the graduation of the 194th Academy, that's the academy that's going to graduate this month on December 20th. That, currently, we have 24 police officer candidates that are in that academy that will graduate. That 24 will add to the current- That 24 will add to the current 674 that we have now. So, on the 20th, that number goes up. So, we'll have 698 on that day. Now, these 24 officers, they have a four-month of field training that they have to go through, so they're going to be riding with another officer. The 195th and 196th class, the two other academies that are within this fiscal budget year, the cost for each of those academies is roughly just over $3 million, $3 million and change for each academy class, based on the uniforms, the training, the salaries, and all the benefits for those officers while they're going through the academies. These two classes being deleted saves that amount, roughly $6.2, $6.4 million.
Okay. If I have some clarity, because the second of those two academies wasn't going to start till March, that would, a portion of that timeframe would carry into the next fiscal year. So, the amount we're saving in this fiscal year is not the full amount. And I guess I'm asking the Finance Department, how much are we expected to save in this fiscal year if we delete that last academy? You understand the question?
Yeah. And let me put some preface to that before he answers that. So, the next academy class was scheduled to, meaning the 195th was scheduled to, I'm sorry, through the chair, was scheduled to occur or start in January. That's the 195th.
Right.
We delayed the start of that class because we were trying to identify enough candidates to get that class full. Because the cost, you have a fixed cost or a sunk cost in regards to that 3.1, 3.2 million dollars. So, we want to get, make sure we get as many people in that class as possible, so we're not wasting the cost of that class. The 196, while it is budgeted within this fiscal year, if we don't get it full, we, again, will push that off. So, the savings is then something that may get pushed off to March, April, or May to go to your question of what is the savings?
Yeah. So, I'd like to ask Finance, he understands the question, I appreciate those comments, Chief, thank you. The, if we restore, well, how much are we saving, only relating to that last academy? That's all, that's my entire question. How much are we proposed to save in this fiscal year if that last academy disappears? But that's the first part of my question. Go ahead.
We had budgeted the full cost of the academy in this fiscal year. So, it is the entire academy amount. So, we had budgeted the full cost of both of the, of both of the two academies that are proposed for elimination in this fiscal year.
Okay.
The majority, and I was going to say, the cost that varies and moves between the fiscal years is the cost of the trainees in the academy. However, the vast majority of the sunk costs that the chief just mentioned needs to be provided upfront.
Got it. Okay. So, if we were to restore that last academy to start in April instead of March, and have the amount that gets spent in the next fiscal year account be budgeted in the next fiscal year, what, how much would we have to restore? You understand my question?
I understand the question. We would need to calculate the specifics. It would be, I would imagine it's three-quarters of the amount roughly with an April start would be, that's, would be my guess, but we would need to calculate it specifically.
So, a couple million dollars? Okay. So, maybe, I'd like the answer to that tomorrow, if our Finance Department could get us that, because we're going to be making some decisions next week, and I'd like to have, I know what my options are in that, for that question. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, through the chair. I want to make sure you understand it's more complex than that. Because we are working, we're anticipating not having those academy classes, the people that are involved in the training of that academy class are part of the people, the recruit and training division, that are going to go back into the bid or to the draw, to go back out to the field to reduce the amount of overtime that is used to fill vacant police beats. So, if you say that you're going to have that class and that class starts in May, then you need to take those folks out of the draw process because they are going to need to remain in the positions that they're in to conduct that academy class. So, there's a lot of facets that are dominoes that fall.
Understood. Yes, yes. I appreciate you sharing the layered complexity of that. But I also want us to acknowledge that when we get rid of multiple academies down the road, not too far down the road, the next couple of years, we're going to have a lot, with retirements, we're going to have a lot fewer police officers than we, than we need. We already have a lot fewer and it's going to get worse, and I think at some point, it's unacceptable. So, I wanted to put that on the table. I'm going to ask a few more questions, and I know others have questions. There was some question that I shared, that was shared with us on the council or some people in council, and I shared with the city attorney and the city administrator about the moving of the portions of the library budget to, essentially, to free some of that money up to general fund and some legal things that we had to do. I'm asking the city administration to double-check on those things, to make sure that we are doing or will do this month those things that we're required to do in order to free up those funds. And then I'd also like to know, is the freeing up of those funds going to lead to any reduction in hours in any of our library branches? Okay, I'm just teeing that up. Let's see here. To the Finance Department, I had asked a few weeks ago when we had that special meeting on a Tuesday morning for a list of the newly created non-sworn FTEs within the past four years. I'm not sure that list was created. Could Finance tell me if that was created and sent over to us?
It is in our packet.
I didn't see it unless it's meshed inside a longer list, that was confusing.
In the first quarter R&amp;E report, attachment A.
So, that was a, that seemed like a bigger list. Was that just the list I asked for, or was that some bigger list I have to cull through?
Through the chair to Councilmember Kalb, the list is of every department and all of the positions, and then, because it's in a short turnaround, trying to go through all of the departments and all of the positions over the last five years, we listed every position in each department and then the net change for each of those positions. So, it is a longer list, but it shows, it's a specific position in 2019, and that, does it still exist, or was there a net change between 2019 and 23, 24? And so, you'll see all of that as a larger total.
But if you understand, thank you. If you understand that what I want to be able to look at is a list of all the newly-created FTEs in the past four or five years without having to go through a bigger list that will take me hours to figure out where is the information that I'm looking for? And so, can someone get that to me tomorrow? You know, the list I'm actually looking for, that's not buried, buried throughout a longer list? Am I being clear here?
Councilmember Kalb, I was just looking at this list. It is summarized by department, I believe. And so, there are individual positions when they were created, and then there's a summary by department of the total number of positions that were increased or decreased by department. What I didn't see, though, are whether any of those positions are vacant, which I think would be helpful for us in case we wanted to take a look at deleting any vacant newly-created positions.
I just want a list of FTEs that were newly-created in the past four years, non-sworn. That's all I wanted. If I have to go through a long list to find it myself, that's not, that's not answering my question. I'm sorry. Was the list that I'm asking for hard to put together?
Yes, it is. And this is our best, our best delivery in a week and a half. There is a list of 129.99 FTEs of newly-created positions between July 1, 2019, and June 30, 2024.
I'm sorry, you mentioned, I didn't hear, you mentioned a number, how many FTEs?
129.99.
129 FTEs were newly-created the past five years, I think you're using, right?
That is correct.
Okay, a non-sworn FTEs?
Yes.
Okay. And this tells me by department?
By department, by position.
Okay. Okay, so it's a 20-page document to list all those?
Yes. And when you go to the last page, page 21 of 21, there is a summary, summary on the last line, there's a net 129 new FTEs created.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. Thank you, appreciate it.
Sure. And then, as the follow-up, you wanted to know, are any of these vacant? So, all vacancies were assumed in the budget balancing. So, there's no additional vacant positions to consider.
So, if we were to delete any vacant positions, that would not have an impact on balancing this budget?
They're essentially already deleted. There's no, correct, there is no additional budgetary impact.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I believe the city administrator mentioned, or maybe someone else mentioned, that we are going to step up our parking enforcement efforts, where people are actually parking where they shouldn't be parking and making sure that people who are doing that are getting appropriately fined and so on. Is that right to the city administrator?
Through the chair, Councilmember Kalb, yes.
Yeah, okay, appreciate that. I know we're going to have some discussion about potential revenue measures, some level of sales tax possible. Is that all coming to us next week for our discussions? Is that right, these potential tax measures?
There are just very brief, one paragraph summaries of the three potential items, and the ones that we move forward, a couple are proposed by the administration, the two parcel taxes, one is proposed by Councilmember Jenkins, the sales tax, those will be in the packet on Friday.
Okay. And, okay, I appreciate that. And I think that's, when we're ready to get to the one ordinance on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund fiscal necessity question, I will have a brief amendment to add to that.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I believe Councilmember Guyo is next.
Thank you, thank you. And I will invite the police chief to please come on up. I do have some questions regarding public safety, and I strongly believe that public safety is our number-one priority, and it should be. It was in the past, it should be today, and it should be tomorrow. And so, just to get an understanding from you, you know, I still remember when Oakland had 800 officers on the street level, not sitting in their office, not creating other activities, but in the street level. And so, for me, today, you know, I'm out there at 6:00 in the morning with my workers cleaning up the neighborhood, and I get to see what happened the night before. Sideshow activity, burned cars on the left in the middle of intersections. I even took out, invited our city administrator to go with me on a ride along, and he, clearly we saw a dead body on the sidewalk there on Fruitvale Avenue at 1:00 in the afternoon. So, for me, the question that I have for you is, I strongly support the increasing of law enforcement here in the city of Oakland, because a good number of the cases are not being reported. What I get the calls and I submit them over, because a lot of the people say, "Look, I called, 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 nobody shows up. They broke into my house, they stole my car, they did X, Y, Z in my business, nobody shows up." So, for me, it's, what I'm trying to understand from you is, the police chief, right now, how many officers do we have that are able to be at the street level, patrolling?
Yes, sir, through the chair. As stated earlier, we currently have 674 officers that are on the Oakland Police Department. Of that 678, we roughly have, and I don't have the exact figure in my head right now, but we roughly carry about 80 on some type of administrative leave, whether that's medical administrative leave or administrative leave for some type of investigation from a complaint or anything else. So, when you talk about boots on the ground right now, or actually officers out there working the streets, you're, you know, you're looking at a number hovering right around 600 right now.
We'll say, but then, so you have also, you have, well, you do have eight officers that are on a daily leave, right? So, you have 600 on the street daily?
Not on the street. That's 600 officers that are available to work patrol, able to work investigations, and able to work administration and all throughout the department. You have roughly 600 officers, you know, somewhere before, right now, I'd say somewhere before 590, 600, that are working every day.
And how many are planning to retire this year?
The number we have right now is roughly 85 to 90 can retire if they chose to do so.
They can retire, because I see a good number have gone over to Alameda, because I know the police chief in Alameda. I see Oakland officers joining the county sheriff and across the way leaving the city of Oakland. So, for me, it's having the academies present to keep recruiting, to make sure that we have a representative body, because, you know, I saw your numbers in terms of the violence, but that's, for me, that's not an accurate number, not coming out of the neighborhoods where I live in. Because a lot of our folks are not going to call it in, report it, so they're calling us, "Mr. Guyo, they broke into my auto shop last night." Or, "Mr. Guyo, they broke into my home, and Mr. Guyo, my children can't walk to school because they're being assaulted." And so, for me, it's, how do we get Oakland back to a level where it's safe to be here as a family raising children? And secondly, how do I attract the business to relocate to Oakland? Because you brought up Walgreens. Walgreens, they're also leaving the one on Foothill in Fruitvale. Because I was standing there when they broke in, six people ran in and stole their cars. I called the police, the police showed up and said, "Mr. Guyo, we can't do anything and chase them, because we're not supposed to chase them." And they just walked out with their goods, got in their cars, and took off. So, for me, so for me, it's, I want to be very clear, in terms of the public that I represent, that I live in, that they're asking for more support when it comes to public safety, and I want to make sure that, for me, that I, we continue the academies that are necessary to keep the law enforcement, but I want them on the street. So, what I'm looking for is employees from public works to be on the street level, not sitting in city halls, sitting in their office, making more rules and more laws, because right now Oakland is greatly challenged, not only when it comes to safety, but when it comes to the blight, when it comes to the graffiti, when it comes to the illegal dumping, when it comes to the stolen cars. And we have to recognize that that's what we're living through and be able to correct that behavior, so I don't have to keep, you know, raising more taxes, taxing higher, which what all that does is send businesses to other cities to do business, and I want to be able to bring people back. I appreciate the art movement, because you create the excitement and want to bring people here to Oakland to celebrate like we used to. And so, so for me, it's, you know, I'd like to, you know, sit down with you to, you know, get your opinion in terms of, you know, what do we need to do to elevate the number of our officers? Because I still have the NSA, right? The negotiated settlement agreement that shows up and tells us what we're doing wrong. I got a police commission that's telling you what's going on that's wrong. Then I got three other advisory committees when it comes to public safety that's keeping you busy. And so, for me, I want to see people, the money that I invest, to be at the street level, helping my children and families in my schools, because if I go to any of our elementary schools, you see a long line of cars, mom and dad dropping off their kids to school, but it used to be when I went to school, we could walk to school, walk back home, and be safe. So, anyways, I like to make sure that our police department stays at a level that we can administer public safety and protect our children and families, and want to bring people back to Oakland like we used to have at one time, because when I go to the airport, Hagenburgers, and at one time, there were people walking up and down, I saw Broadway here the same way. And I need to bring people back, but it's going to require having a clean, safe city. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Guyo. We have Councilmember Reed, and then I'll speak. And thank you, Chief. Councilmember Reed?
Thank you, Council President Bass. I was trying to withhold questions since I've asked so many in writing and in our meetings and our council president team meetings. But I did hear a number of questions that came from the public, and I just want to either state on record for us to follow up at a later time between now and the next meeting, or if staff is available to answer any of these questions. So, I can state them all and then see who's available, if anyone. The first was wanting, through the chair... The first was wanting through the chair, if we can confirm the timing, this would be to the city administrator, the timing to pay the organizations listed in the report for item 5.1, Attachment D. My question is mostly listed and summarized on page 12 under my question that I asked, number 21. These are organizations that were approved for payment from our community grant fund for the $750,000. Five are awaiting payment totaling 76,000. There are also other workforce grantees, DVP partners. And I think I want to just ensure for the public who are continuing to reach out with concerns, do we have the funds to cover all approved contracts and outstanding invoices within those listed under question 21 for community grants, whether it's DVP or workforce grantees? I'll further ask through the chair, if we can confirm through finance, how much matching funds contribute to the arts and cultural funds? I heard a public speaker making mention of matching funds, and I just wanted clarity on what are those potential funds that are matched into those partners that are at risk? I don't know if we capture that or collect that, or if that's just something that the organizations are aware of through their own separate grant process. I wanted to know if we can confirm the total amount proposed to be cut for senior services. We heard from those from SOS Meals on Wheels, from Mercy Brown Bag. There was mention of our sugar sweetened tax, Measure HH. And I wanted to confirm or have finance speak to any ballot measures that also fund, with funding balance, that will remain to support senior programs, services, food security, and what conversations we were having with county, state, federal agency, or other partners to offset those costs that may be lost through the city budget that might be secured through another funding partner. I wanted to confirm through finance, I did have an opportunity to speak with Chief Covington as well, but I wanted to just confirm that the mandated number of our fire personnel that must be available daily for fire and life safety response is 480. If so, what risk for any funding grants, like the SAFER Grants and others, might be impacted or will be impacted and add to the financial and fire operation challenges? I believe I have maybe three more questions here for the record. A comment was made by one of our local 21 leaders that they were, this is to the city administrator, that they were unwilling to give concessions without conversations on strategies and the recommended solutions that you propose. Perhaps you can speak to the outreach between the administration and your department leaders along those conversations that I understood have been had and hopefully I know are continuing with you. To the city attorney, I heard from our former Public Works Director, Brooke Levin, on Zoom regarding the shift in funds from Fund 4400, the facilities fund for LAD. I wanted to confirm with the city attorney and/or the finance department, could this put LAD in a legally challengeable position? If the funds are not used in accordance with state law and the assessment district, could that 19 million be challenged and would that put us at greater risk? And then finally, I wanted to share that the proposed merger of OPW, Public Works and the Department of Transportation, I certainly support how we're moving forward with that conversation. I did also look up when I heard the name of that department and wanted to get clarity on just how we're looking to ensure that the alignment of the name is also a name that resonates in the community. They certainly understand transportation, they understand Public Works. Infrastructure might be a bit off-putting, and so that's just something that I wanted to note from that comment. And then finally, I'll just make a statement. We've talked about OPD in the packet, item 5.1. The question that I put forth in there was listed under question 36A. And it spoke to asking the question if OPD relied solely on straight time with no overtime, what would be the impacts on service delivery and the availability of personnel in each OPD area on a daily basis? And a summary of that response from the city administration is that critical operations, including multi-jurisdictional efforts led by the ceasefire section, which have led to multiple arrests and firearm recoveries, would be significantly impacted if we relied solely on straight time. The essential crime prevention efforts such as violence prevention, our air support, division-level investigations related to the negotiated settlement agreement compliance would also be compromised if overtime were eliminated. It further states that it could weaken our ability to address certainly calls for service, which we have been working to approve on, and for community members impacting a proactive, the impact of and proactive work to reduce our violent crime, which has decreased nearly 40% from last year. And so eliminating overtime would mean that all non-essential law enforcement activities would cease, destroying years of work. It states in the report from the administration to build trust and connection with the community that we serve. And it could jeopardize grants that we rely on, staff working multiple roles that would require overtime. And so I wanted to state that in response to some of the questions and comments that have come related to OPD. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Reed. Okay, I have just a couple of questions myself and some comments, and then we'll go on to moving this item forward and getting to our last item. In terms of questions, this might have been asked, but I do want to ask it for the record. I do think it would be helpful to have a summary of the proportionate share of reductions by department, especially for the public safety departments and some of the smaller ones. That would help us understand some of the equity issues. And then there are a number of reductions where I think it would be helpful to understand not only what's being reduced, but what's the totality of the program that will continue. And so for cultural affairs, for example, the Department of Workplace and Employment Standards, there are some reductions there. And if it's possible for the staff to also help us understand what programs will continue, that would help put it in context. And I think that's also true for some of the Parks and Recs items. I did notice that there's a reduction in the city clerk's office for council translation. I do want to hear what that impact will be for the remainder of the year, as well as the reduction in Parks and Rec for Lake Merritt. Those are my questions. And then just a couple of comments. These reductions are incredibly hard. However, I know that we all are on the same page that we need to get our city in terms of, we need to get our city moving forward and on solid financial ground. I do want to raise that with the potential for one or two one-time land sales, as was stated throughout the public comment, it's possible for the council in the future to direct what the land sales revenue could go towards. And this is where we could potentially prioritize some critical one-time services, whether that is replenishing the Affordable Housing Trust Fund or some public safety items. So I do want to be working with my budget team, Councilmembers Reed, Jenkins, and Kaplan, to think through whether we want to propose a prioritization of any one-time revenues that we receive from potential land sales. And then finally, because public safety is such a critical issue, I want to underscore again what we have in front of us with this particular budget. There's a lot of attention to what we are reducing. However, I do want to underscore that the administrator, together with our public safety chiefs, Brooklyn Williams and the mayor's office, have been doing a tremendous job with very limited resources and being strategic for how we can continue to move forward the decline in crime rates that we are seeing over the last year. And so again, the Department of Violence Prevention Ceasefire Strategy will be able to continue together with OPD's version in collaboration. And as we just heard, OPD will be able to focus on patrol investigations and internal affairs or officer accountability. We also have been seeing 911 response rates improving, and so that will also continue. And then lastly, we heard that we have an academy graduating, the 194th, on December 20th. So those 24 recruits will be able to go into field training and then join the Oakland Police Department. So while we are focused on some very difficult reductions, I do want to underscore around community safety. We are really working to preserve the core of what has been working over the past year. Okay, with that, let's get down to moving these items forward. I do want to note again that for item number eight, and that is legislation number three, the ordinance regarding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, because this is an ordinance, it requires two readings. So we would like to take the first vote today. And I'll turn it over to Councilmember Cobb to offer up his amendment.
Thank you. Testing, one, two, three. Yeah, there we go. I got it. Thank you, Madam Chair. So the city administration is putting forward some information or plans to legally move some of the funds that have been for a purpose to cover our deficit in the general fund through various mechanisms. Usually it's identifying an extreme fiscal necessity. In the situation of our, what we call our boomerang funds, which is a money that goes into our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, there is no such provision in that ordinance that was created in 2013 that I was the author of and the administration back then worked on with me. So there is a proposal to add that same extreme fiscal necessity language into the existing law, into the internal ordinance, that would then, if it is adopted, allows the city, city council and so on, to move those funds during those periods of extreme fiscal necessity from the trust fund to the general fund as needed. What I'm, my proposal is the following, and I'm going to read it right now. In any given fiscal, quote, I'm sorry, this is an additional sentence in the paragraph that is underlined in the ordinance. "In any given fiscal year, the amount the council may appropriate shall not exceed 50% of the estimated revenue budgeted from said funds." This refers again to the boomerang funds. Because the amount being proposed to be transferred this year, in this immediate fiscal year, is 5.7 million, that already is less than half. So this amendment does not impact the emergency need, or the urgent need to use those funds this fiscal year. You could still do that. What it does, what this amendment does is, in subsequent fiscal years, when future councils may want to use all the funds, which could be as much as 15, 17 million dollars, this protects half of them. Which means that at least half of them, half of those funds would stay in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and the other half could be, go to the general fund in those challenging years. I do that, and that's a big compromise. That is very hard to swallow, even to do that. But that's a compromise. It doesn't impact the request this year, but it does protect part of that fund in subsequent years. And I think that's important to do, given that affordable housing for homeless and beyond is a high priority for all of us. So that's, that's the amendment, and that's the rationale behind it.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, so I will, however reluctant I am to change this boomerang fund question, I will move that proposal with my amendment and only with my amendment.
Thank you. Councilmember Jenkins?
So through the chair, a question to the author or to the city attorney. The language you're putting forth, could it be rolled back by future councils?
Well, since this is a, is my voice coming? Okay, since this is an ordinance, anybody, any council could adopt new, you know, adopt new ordinances and have two readings and have a whole, you know, ordinance process like we do for anything else. Yes, this is not, it's not a charter amendment or a ballot measure, it's just an ordinance. That's the change with two readings, yeah.
Just through the chair, I'm a little hesitant to tie the hands. And I see that you're being very thoughtful and pragmatic with this, but I'm very hesitant to tie the hands of future councils. We don't know what kind of economic downturns might happen. And I realize the great importance of these funds and what they mean for our community, but we're tying the hands of future councils. And I'm challenged with not knowing what's going to go, what's coming. Yeah.
Well, I would say through the chair, we're actually, the ordinance is freeing up a lot of money if there's an extreme fiscal necessity for future councils. It's just not going to free up everything, and it keeps part of that in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So compared to today's law, this frees up a lot, and it creates more flexibility, just not too much. I think it's a good compromise.
Okay, we have Councilmember Kaplan with her hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Cobb. I think that is a thoughtful way forward. And I also support that we can restore funding to affordable housing when we get additional funding from other planned sources. So I will second the motion. Thank you.
Okay. With that, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Calling part three of item eight for the ordinance. This would be, if approved, this would be for introduction. This was moved by Councilmember Cobb, seconded by Councilmember Kaplan with the amendment just read into record. Councilmember Fife is excused. Councilmember Guyot?
I'm going to vote no because affordable housing is a priority of the city. And certainly, we need to do a better job administering the budget throughout the year, the budget that we approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Guyot. Councilmember Jenkins?
Reluctantly, 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 aye.
Councilmember Cobb?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaplan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramachandran is excused. Councilmember Reed?
I'm going to say aye with the conversation that I just had with the director that is helpful. Thank you.
Council President Bass?
Aye.
Motion passes with the...
Back to Councilmember Fife? Can her vote be recorded?
I suppose. Councilmember Fife? Motion passes with a vote of six ayes, one no, Guyot, one excused, Ramachandran.
Okay, thank you all. And for the remaining two pieces of legislation and item number eight, those two are resolutions, and I'll entertain a motion to forward this to the December 17th budget meeting.
Second.
Let's call the roll.
On item eight, parts one and two. And, yes, item eight, parts one and two, the request to forward these to the December 17th budget meeting. Is it 16th?
17th.
17th. Moved by Councilmember Reed, seconded by Councilmember Fife. Councilmember Fife?
Aye.
Councilmember Guyot?
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Cobb?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaplan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramachandran is excused. Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
And Council President Bass?
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven ayes, one excused. Ramachandran?
Thank you. For item number nine, I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Kaplan, would you like to make that?
I don't, I don't think we need a motion. It's incorporated now into item eight?
Yes, it is. So we will just leave it here on this agenda. Is that what we can do since it's incorporated?
No action was taken? Is that acceptable?
No action? Okay, so that will be no action on item number nine.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I just clarify that in the proposed budget, it wasn't $30 million from self-insurance, it was some smaller amount that you were proposing to move?
Correct, 14 million.
Okay, all right.
That's the correct amount, is what I understand.
Thank you.
Okay, great. And let's move on to our last item, item number 10.
On item eight and nine were called together, and the speakers were called together for that item as well, through the chair. Going to item 10. Adopt the following pieces of legislation. A resolution amending Resolution Number 90326, which adopted the mid-cycle budget in the fiscal year '23 through '25. Capital improvement program to allocate funding from proposed 2025. Measure KK and Measure U bond issuances to new and existing city infrastructure projects and affordable... to new and existing city infrastructure projects and affordable housing projects, and make other related amendments to fund 20218, authorizing the city administrator to create new funds for the 2025 bond, funding as necessary, and directing the city administrator to schedule a report to the city council regarding the timing for implementing a 2025 bond issuance. And a resolution allocating $10 million in funds for Measure U housing bond funds to new construction of multifamily rental affordable housing projects, and authorizing the city administrator to make development loans under the new construction of multifamily rental affordable housing program, home key and rapid rehabilitation of the existing affordable housing without returning to council. You have approximately 39 speakers on this item.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan, for bringing this forward and working with me. Let's hear your report, please.
Thank you so much.
And we are planning to just hear it. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you so much. And given the direction that we will be continuing these items to the 17th, I will give a brief report. I would note that the full spreadsheet is in the packet. So if people want to read the full list of projects that are proposed to be funded, that is in the packet and would be part of what we're recommending to continue to the 17th. So colleagues, this item is to solve a couple of issues. One is to give clarity and assurance as to the plan to issue bonds in the 2025 year so that Oakland can move forward on a variety of really important projects. Included within this funding are funds from voter-approved ballot measures, most particularly Measure U, which provides funding for a variety of essential uses, including traffic safety, paving, bicycle and pedestrian projects, sidewalk repair, affordable housing, and the construction and repair of city facilities, including public safety facilities, libraries, and other essential needs. And so what we are recommending that the council would adopt, and again, we're proposing to put this forward to the next meeting, would lay out that list of projects to be funded and establish our direction to issue bonds in 2025. And then the administration would come back to council at the beginning of 2025 with a more detailed timeline and next steps to undertake that bond issuance. In addition to reflecting projects that had been previously listed for a fall 2024 bond issuance that was canceled, we also revise to take into account changes to projects that have taken place since that list was adopted, including that one project that was for $10 million has since been canceled. And so we are recommending adding those funds to the affordable housing funding so that we can issue additional affordable housing funding in the coming year with the pending notice that has already gone out for applicants. And that would allow us to leverage more state money as well, coming back to Oakland for affordable housing. We've also listed some funds from Measure BB Transportation, and we've received some feedback recommending that we reduce the amount in BB and move some of those things to Measure U. But again, since the intent is not to take final action today, we will be able to do that on the 17th. We are specifically wanted to highlight that we are proposing to restore the Lake Shore Traffic Safety Project to protect bicyclists and pedestrians. That's a project that's very important, gotten a lot of interest. So we are proposing to restore that Lake Shore project as well as ADA accessibility and sidewalk repair, along with, of course, the affordable housing and the listed city facilities. And so at the appropriate time, the recommended motion would be to continue this item to the 17th. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan, and I'd like to second your motion as the co-author. I do want to say just very briefly, the longer we wait on these projects, the more costly they will become. Several of these projects have state and federal funding that we do not want to lose. Some of the projects that have state and federal funding include the Lincoln Rec Center expansion, as well as the Fire Station Number Four upgrade. Those are really critical, and both in my district, as is the San Antonio Park Master Plan and the Lake Shore Avenue Bufford Bike Lane, which I am committed to supporting along with the community and the family who were impacted. So thank you, colleagues, for hearing this out, and we hope that you will be able to move it forward with myself and the council member. Any questions or comments from the dais?
Yes, I do.
Please go ahead.
To the chair, I just want to understand for the 90 million in cash from Measure Q and U that's unspent, through the chair, I'm not sure if it's to finance or to the city administrator. Is there a plan to spend that money in the proposed timeframe of five years from the time of the bond issuance? How will the proposed impact, how will the proposal impact the city's ability to utilize the funds that we currently have on hand? Will these funds be in jeopardy in any way? If so, what is that, what are those risk? I'm not sure on this one. I know I just ran off the dais to get some staff leadership input, but I wanted to confirm if staff has weighed in on this proposal. They had not weighed in on the other proposal. So I just wanted to hear if staff had any feedback. And has the chief seen the proposal? And have we done any analysis? As I understand, that he is working on the OIG staffing study. And there will be a demand study to follow between OPD as well. So if someone can answer those questions, that would be helpful for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Reed.
And that was related to the OPD facilities that are laid out in the plan.
Got it. Thanks for that clarification. Councilmember Kaplan, do you wish to speak first? And then I can say something, depending on what you say.
Thank you. Just briefly, again, the recommendation is not to adopt it today, but to continue it to the 17th. Most of the projects on the list are from the previously adopted list that was deferred because there was not a bond issuance in the fall of 2024. And so the question of, of course, making sure the projects are undertaken and as money is spent within the required time horizon, of course, is important. But it's a separate process from the council approval of the funding. The affordable housing funding, I think we've talked about that in terms of the safety facilities. Yes, I have met with the department, and, well, multiple departments, as both police and fire are involved, and as well as, of course, dispatch and 911 dispatch. And we've had a lot of conversations about the need for both larger and better 911 dispatch facilities. And the allocation of the funds allows that fund to be used for scoping and design as well. So I'm not proposing that we, as the council, at this time, are adopting the design of the building, but rather providing the funding that allows for that to happen, which the impacted departments, of course, would be the direct involvement with. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you. And I'll also just add that when we scheduled this, I did check in with City Administrator Johnson. And the last resolved clause states that the city administrator shall report back to the city council, not later than February 25th, regarding the planned timing and next steps for implementing the '25 bond issuance. So there will be an opportunity for the future council to weigh in.
Thank you, Council President Bass.
Thank you. Administrator Johnson?
And through the chair, the council, at that time, will also provide input specifically, what are the material impacts of, you know, moving forward with the items on the list? Thank you.
Okay, great. Let's go on to public comment.
Thank you. Once you hear your name, please approach the podium or raise your hand in the Zoom app. Mr. Gene Hazard, Asada Olabala, Sheila McCracken, Elizabeth Medrigal, Liz Probst, Capri Roth, Tim Dunn, Carol Core, or Carr, Karen D. Tiffany Ng, George P. Spies, James Birch, Vanessa Riles, Hannah Zuckerman, Andrea Henson, Art May, Jeff Levin, Prescott Chair, Brian Colbertson, George Spies, Joyous Morale, Darren Lounds, Anwar Baradi, Chris Hwang, Robert Prince, Kevin Pally, Lindsey Haddix, Omar Rivera, Dolores Tahada, Carla Guerrero, Mida Menacom Shirley, Roslyn Whithearn, Nita B., and Alan Doan. In no particular order.
Madam President, I didn't get my questions answered from before. And that was, what was the third-party reimbursement to the police tomorrow? The dollar amount? I'd like that from staff for the police department. Also, we keep talking about 674 police officers. It's not 674 police officers that are on the streets at one time. We got three shifts, if I'm not mistaken. So we need clarification. How many officers, Gao, are on the street at each shift? That's what we need to know. Not 674. How many? Also, I thought HH, the sugar tax, was restricted. And that was a bond measure, a parcel tax. So why are we dipping into that to offset some of this deficit? I'd like an answer to that question as well. Can we move restricted funds to unrestricted? To offset the deficit? I don't think so. I got...
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Hazard. Yes, sir. Through the chair. Yes, I stopped it at one minute. Thank you. I'll just say briefly that the prior item has a Measure HH resolution where the council would possibly declare a fiscal necessity in order to use those funds.
Okay. Now, this Lincoln Park Rec Center started out as a communal effort to raise money to have the project completed. And you had a senator that gave money to the, donated money from his funds he had available based on the fact that the center would be used for a place for, in case of emergency situations. So I don't know what you're talking about. You gotta use the money. So on here, you have 22 million. You're talking about $32 million for a project that some kind of way she manipulated BASK. Instead of donating to get it completed, you turned it over to take money from Measure U to get it completed. Also, with the project that Cobb has, we didn't spend money on this Piedmont Library. And we gotta come to some conclusion. They have, OUSD has dropped out of the double occupancy. We paid maintenance costs. Who's paying for the property?
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Asada.
Good day, council members. My name's Liz Probst. I'm here today on behalf of East Bay Asian Local Development Corporation, commonly known as ABALTC. ABALTC is an Oakland-based nonprofit community development organization. Our Oakland portfolio consists of over 2,000 affordable housing units and over 300,000 square feet of commercial-serving space, serving more than 95 local small businesses and nonprofit organizations. Thank you especially to city staff, to Councilmember Kaplan, and all of council members for your steadfast championship of affordable housing in Oakland and for consideration of today's agenda. ABALTC is currently under construction on 609 units in Oakland, in Havens Court, in Eastlake, and in West Oakland, building on the city's successful issuance of prior NOFA rounds. Our most recent project, Lake Merritt-Bart, will serve 97 new homes for seniors, and we continue to be thankful. Thank you.
Hello, council. Hello, President. My name is Karen D. I am a co-founder of Friends of Lincoln Square Park, based in Oakland-Chinatown. I'm also a member of the Wasson Community Service Club, who has been providing community and educational services for the past 72 years. I'm speaking in favor of Item 10, this resolution to proceed with the bond sale. Neighborhoods around the city have been waiting years, and in our case, decades, for critical improvements in our parks and recreation centers. As we have already seen, the longer we wait, the more expensive these projects will get. I understand there are painful budget decisions in front of us now. But with Item 10, we also have a spark of hope. We have the opportunity with voter-approved Measure U to make investments in our future now. These projects have been thoroughly vetted.
Hello, council. This is George Spees, and I'm both George Spees', by the way, to the clerk. I want to thank councilmembers Kaplan and Bass for this measure, and I urge everyone to vote in support of it. I believe the Measure U bond should be sold in the original intended schedule in 2025, and without this, other costs will pile up. Oakland has over 30 traffic deaths and hundreds of serious injuries annually, with awful personal costs borne by these victims and their families. Cash settlements for these families cost millions every year. Costs of emergency response are disproportionately due to traffic violence. The deteriorating condition of the roads makes repaving costs rise over time. And inflation due to that delay makes every project cost much more. We can't even spend grant money that we've been awarded without having the matching funds that come from Measure U. So safety cannot wait for a better time. The time is now, and this is an important thing to do. And while I have a few, I'm out of time. Thank you so much.
My name is Sheila McCracken. And on August 12th of 2023, my four-year-old niece, Maya Correa, died to a brain injury from a bike accident on the east side of Lake Merritt on Lake Shore Avenue. She was one of 33 lives lost to Oakland's dangerous roads in 2023. I'm here today to urge you to support the bond sale of Measure U and ensure that OakDOT's paving program is funded. All of Oakland residents deserve safe streets. There are too many unpredictable dangers that residents in Oakland face. But one that you can ensure we are not facing are streets that are deadly by design. You can ensure the message is sent that a credit rating is not more important than the residents that live here. It is not often you are in a position to save lives and prevent other families from facing tragedies like mine has. But today you are. So again, I ask you to please support the 2025 Measure U bond sale. Thank you.
Hello, council. Measure U is a limited source and already dedicated to the purpose of affordable housing development. And forward-committing Measure U funds would allow the developers to be able to seek additional sources of funding to be able to build faster during this housing affordability crisis and homeless state of emergency. And while we appreciate this effort to forward-commit these funds, we have to also recognize that this is not new money, and it doesn't absolve you from using the boomerang funds to clean up the budget mess. Any developers who are willing to build housing developments 30 and 60% below market rate should be prioritized for this funding. We need affordable housing for all, not just housing for the middle class can afford. The city must prioritize deeply affordable housing that's 30 to 60% below the market rate for any future budget cycles. And because I have a few more seconds, that what's happening with this budget and what's been happening with this budget is very irresponsible. And before defunding affordable...
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, I'm Roslyn Windham. Forward-committing Measure U funds allow for developers to be able to seek additional sources of funding to be able to build faster during this housing affordability crisis and homeless state of emergency. And developers who are willing to build 30 to 60% below the market rate and come... income should be prioritized for funding. We need affordable housing for all, not just for the middle, not just that the middle class can afford. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alan Doan, managing partner of Strategic Urban Development Alliance, also the developer of Mandela Station, which is 240 units of affordable housing. I will never come up here and speak against the appropriation of money for critically-needed affordable housing. I do have grave concerns about this process because of the fact that our project, by the scoring criteria, was unjustly pushed back. And I think the record will show that's the case. Hopefully, we will get funded in this round. If we don't, $136 million of already-committed grant money is at risk, and our entire development is at risk. And so, I just want to say, the units that are getting funded today ahead of ours are costing more per unit and basically a higher level of affordability than ours, or lower level of affordability.
Good afternoon. My name is Art May, and I work with Alan Doan, and I am in support of this proposal. However, it's a little bit qualified and conditional, as Alan mentioned. I'm a strong supporter of affordable housing. I'm a strong supporter of a staff implementing this process to expedite the getting the dollars out for this round. However, as Alan mentioned, you know, the scoring process basically disincentivize large-scale mixed-use projects, which don't qualify for SB 35, which therefore lose the scoring. I would highly encourage council to, on future NOFAs, to make sure large-scale projects like Brooklyn Branson, MacArthur-Bart, Mandela Station, those type of projects have an equal footing as other projects. But don't get me wrong. I'm a strong supporter of this measure. I'm a strong supporter of getting the money out, and I support, you know, the passage of this measure. Thank you.
Moving to our Zoom users, starting with Carla Guerra. You may unmute yourself and begin your one-minute comments, Carla.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Carla Guerra. I'm speaking on behalf of the Unity Council with regards to the forward-commitment of the $10 million of Measure U funds. We appreciate and support this resolution, especially since it will help maximize the number of projects we can fund and allow us to compete for state funding in early 2025. It will also allow us to, you know, as affordable housing developers, to be able to seek additional sources of funding, to be able to build faster. While we appreciate the effort to forward-commit, the city must prioritize housing in future budget cycles. And the current Measure U NOFA, as you know, is oversubscribed, and this additional allocation will be awarded in January, you know, to keep projects moving forward. So, we thank you, and we thank staff and Councilmember Kaplan for supporting affordable housing developments in Oakland by bringing this item today. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving to Brian Culberson. You may unmute yourself and begin your comments, Brian.
Hi. My name is Brian Culberson. I'm commenting for Traffic Violence Rapid Response. I am commenting to encourage a bond sale of Measure U funds in the spring and the ability for OakDOT to loan against those funds to be able to start construction soon. We've already delayed many important projects due to the delay of this bond sale, and we need to be moving forward as soon as possible with the crucial safety projects. We're in the middle of a traffic violence crisis that we are just starting to see a success by making for safer streets. And we cannot lose that momentum, and we need to continue supporting OakDOT to make our streets safer by selling this bond and supporting them as an institution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Moving to Kevin. You may begin.
Hi. My name is Kevin Daly, a board member of Transport Oakland. We need to move quickly on selling Measure U bonds and finding other funding for all Measure U traffic safety projects while we're waiting for those bonds to be sold. Thanks to councilmembers Kaplan and Bass for moving the bond sale forward. Over 30 people a year die from traffic fatalities in Oakland. There are millions of dollars each year in settlements, which Oakland has to pay. This year, my friend reported a year when one of those who died because his bicycle hit a pothole on Skyline Boulevard. The Measure U funding would allow Skyline and many other streets to be made safer. So, let's move quickly on finding funding for those projects. Don't, let's also delay the merger of Departments of Transportation and Public Works until we have carefully studied the merger, both financially and operationally.
Thank you for your comments. Moving to Carol Carr.
Hello. Hi. I'm an East Oakland resident, also, excuse me, here for HCC Bay Area Affordable Housing Development. Measure U is a limited source, already dedicated to the purpose of affordable housing development. While we appreciate the efforts forward, we must also recognize that this law, excuse me, that this isn't new money. The city must prioritize housing in future, sorry, budget cycles. As the funds are being reallocated from another Measure U-funded non-housing project, which is no longer moving forward, there will be no impact on the city's budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Moving to Tiffany Ing. You may unmute yourself and begin your comments, Tiffany.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Ing. I'm with Friends of Lincoln Square Park, speaking in favor of proceeding without delay. With this bond sale, we can invest in housing, libraries, and especially public spaces like our rec center, so we can keep families here, keep our seniors from the despair of loneliness, and keep our streets safe, and keep our infrastructure upgraded and ready to respond to everyday stressors and larger emergencies and disasters. The city needs these wins. These projects have been thoroughly vetted and prioritized through the city's equitable CIP planning process. And as the most urgent needed capital projects, we simply cannot delay any longer. The stars are aligned to get shovels in the ground now. These tangible investments will help rebuild trust in our city government and provide safer, more resilient places where our communities can thrive. Thank you for your consideration, your service, and your leadership.
Thank you, Tiffany. Moving to Dolores Tahada. You may unmute yourself and begin your comments, Dolores.
Hi, I'm ceding time to Lindsay Haddix.
Can you say that one more time?
I am ceding time to Lindsay Haddix.
Okay. Thank you so much. Moving to Jeff Levin.
Thank you. I am also ceding time to Lindsay Haddix.
Okay, thank you. Robert Prince.
Hi, this is Robert Prince, advocacy director of Thank You Today. Our organization supports the expedited sale of Measure U bonds, both to fund affordable housing as well as street and sidewalk repairs and traffic safety enhancements. And we support the retention of transportation and public works staff to actually deliver the projects and win competitive grants. We know this campaign for Measure KK and Measure U, both of which were passed by the voters, including over 75% support for Measure U. This public mandate has since enabled an unprecedented surge in construction activities culminating in a record-setting paving year in 2024. A paving program is like rolling a boulder. So, if the work slows down due to gaps in funding availability, it takes a long time to get things back up to the rate of progress we've seen this year, and Oakland will backslide yet again on deferred maintenance costs. The delayed September bond sales already had a detrimental impact. I understand that the current budget emergency requires some short-term solutions, but please try not to create more medium- and long-term issues within the funding prioritization. Consistent funding and staffing is required to make progress. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Moving to Lindsay Haddix. Two people ceded their time to you. Making out a total of three minutes. You may begin.
Thanks so much. My name is Lindsay Haddix. I'm the executive director of East Bay Housing Organizations. We are a 40-year-old affordable housing justice nonprofit based in Oakland, and we have over 400 members, some of whom you've heard from already today on this item and the previous item around the Boomerang funds. Our members include residents of affordable housing, nonprofit developers of affordable housing, residents of Oakland who believe that affordable housing is a human right, and folks that are interested in housing justice and understand the intersection between housing justice, racial justice, socioeconomic justice, disability justice, and other social justice causes. We are, we were very excited when the city council accepted HCD's staff recommendation to allow the experts at HCD to appropriately allocate Measure U funds and give awards based on the selection criteria in the transparent NOFA. We support that HCD is trying to make those awards announced in early January so that developers can also apply for limited and competitive state tax credit financing. HCD has been very thoughtful in trying to ensure that projects in Oakland are as competitive for other sources of funding as possible, and also that the funding awarding timelines will also align with those other applications. So, EBHO and its members are extremely supportive of allocating, of allowing an additional $10 million to be forward-committed for affordable housing projects that are currently in the pipeline in Oakland. We know that this NOFA, just like previous Measure U NOFAs for affordable housing, will be oversubscribed. The City of Oakland does not have other specific affordable housing funds, including from the general fund, other than Boomerang funds, which are, which, as was discussed earlier, are also being eyed for other purposes in order to support eliminating or reducing the Oakland city budget deficit. So, it's now more than ever, it's really important that Measure U funds are used, are used appropriately and wisely in order to get projects that are shovel-ready moving forward. And we also want to make sure that the City of Oakland continues to prioritize funding for affordable housing in future budget cycles because we also anticipate that future Measure U NOFAs will be oversubscribed, just as we have seen in past rounds. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Chris Hang or Wang? You may unmute yourself.
Thank you. My name is Chris Huang. I'm the board president for Walk Oakland, Bike Oakland, otherwise known as Wobo. Wobo's mission is to improve the quality of life in Oakland through advocating for safe, inclusive, equitable, accessible, and fun walking and bicycling. I encourage the city to ensure that the Measure U bond sale takes place without further delay. My peers in traffic and transportation safety have already shared the benefits of addressing safety as soon as possible, as well as the challenges that will be ahead of us if we do not move forward with sufficiently funding our paving and roadway safety programs. I want to emphasize that safety is not just waiting on Lake Shore Avenue, but in roadway and pavement projects throughout Oakland. So, over three-quarters of voters approved Measure U, and any delay would be absolutely unacceptable. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris, for your comments. Courtney Powell, can you please relay the name that you signed up under?
I believe I signed up under my own name.
Under your name, Courtney?
Correct.
We do not have a card for you, Courtney. I do apologize. Moving back to our in-chamber speakers. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Joyous Morali. I'm with The Village in Courage. Measure U is a limited source and already dedicated to the purpose for affordable housing development. While we appreciate the effort to forward-commit, we must also recognize that this isn't new money and doesn't absolve you to using Boomerang funds to clean up your budget mess. The city must prioritize deeply affordable housing 30% to 60% below the MRI in future budget cycles. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Just renaming, recalling the names that I called that did not approach the podium. Tim Dunn, Hannah Zuckerman, Elizabeth Medrigal, Capri Roth, Darren Lowes, Mida Manicom Shirley, Anwar Baradi, Omar Rivera, Andrea Henson, Prescott Chair, Vanessa Riles, James Birch. Seeing Omar Rivera in the Zoom queue. You may unmute yourself and begin your comments, Omar.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Omar Rivera with East Bay Asian Local Development Corporation. As Liz Probst noted earlier, we are under construction at Lake Merritt-Bart on 97 new affordable units. This project was at risk of losing $55 million in previously-awarded state and federal funds. We could not meet the expected construction timelines. Only through Oakland's rapid and streamlined deployment of Measure U funds were we able to save our funding awards and begin construction. ABALTC is proud to say that we are working in partnership with the city to solve Oakland's housing and homelessness crisis. State and federal funds remain fiercely competitive, and Measure U is one of the best competitive advantages that the city has in securing and leveraging these additional dollars. By supporting this resolution, council will be delivering a winning strategy to bring more units online faster, which is a win for our communities that we can all celebrate. Thank you for your partnership in this effort.
Thank you, Omar, for your comments. At this time, Madam Chair, all names have been called for this item.
Thank you, everyone. I do have one question for the staff, and that question is, there are four to five shovel-ready projects that are very important to keep moving. Some of them may have some grant funding tied to them with certain restrictions. ACA Duffy or Public Works staff, are you able to share a little bit more about how we're going to keep those projects moving?
Thank you. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, Assistant City Administrator. The city does have a number of projects that are in various stages. Our goal for 2024-25 is to maximize the existing Measure U and Measure KK bond funds already issued and cash on hand. That's the $90 million that we've already issued bonds for, that we actually have the cash on hand. Those proceeds actually have a timeframe. They have to be spent in the next, in a five-year period from point of issuance. So, what we are doing is looking at our shovel-ready projects, projects that have already gone through design and that are ready to go out to bid. And so, we'll be examining that and presenting that information to the city administrator. And so, the goal would be is to come back in the future with a five-year CIP that identifies, remember, I'm only talking about the existing $90 million that we have. And so, we would come back with a CIP that would talk about shovel-ready projects, projects ready to go out to bid, and then designing projects that are going to be for future process. So, of that $90 million that we currently have, one of our goals, too, is to look at, to ensure that we don't lose any grant funds that we already have for projects. So, if a project has grant funds and we have this $90 million, the goal is to pair those two and deliver that project in a timely manner.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Culberson?
Madam President, I just got a text. I wonder if I could respectfully ask the clerk to check again if a Ms. Courtney Powell, P-A-L, has a speaker card. They're convinced they submitted one.
Okay. The clerk says they don't, and she didn't ask her staff to confirm.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that. We do have to respect the rules as well as the time.
Okay. They texted me a copy here. I guess it was a hand submission.
Okay. If there's a copy, I'll make an exception this one time.
Through the chair, if they have their yellow sheet, their confirmation of their receipt of providing to the clerk's staff, if they have their yellow sheet, they can provide to us as confirmation. We accept that.
Okay. Do you want to? All right. We do need to move on. We're beyond time. So, we do, everyone, thank you for your public comments on this. There's a motion and a second to move this to our December 17th meeting. There's a motion and a second to move this to our December seventeenth meeting on non-consent. Let's call the roll.
This was moved by council member Kaplan, seconded by President, President Boss to continue this item to the December seventeenth city council agenda on non-consent. On the roll, council members five.
Aye.
Guyo.
Aye.
Jenkins is excused. Cobb.
Aye.
Kaplan is excused. Councilmember Ramachandran is also excused. Reed.
Aye.
And council president Boss.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes with five ayes, three excused, Jenkins, Kaplan, and Ramachandran. To continue item ten to the December seventeenth city council agenda on non-consent.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Let's move on to open forum.
Calling the names that signed up for open forum, in no particular order, please raise your hand or approach the podium. Asada Olabala, Jean Hazard, Seneca Scott, Prescott Chair, Robert Prince, Kevin Daly, Angela Wellman, Andrea Anzor, Hensor, Rosalyn Windham, and Nita B. Thank you.
Every ballot measure that the city council sponsors is manipulated, but the voters are left in the dark because you manipulate it, just like Measure X, which is an illegal ballot measure. Now I see why the president said you could use Measure HH to sweeten tax, because here's the language. However, the city council would have final authority to determine the use of the revenues from the beverage tax. You continue to pull the wool over voters' eyes with this manipulative language. When are you going to stop that? You sit down on your pompous rear ends and you fool the public and you owe twenty-eight thousand dollars because there was never a, a painting done in Chinatown. Where's the twenty-eight thousand dollars? I'm glad, yeah, shake your head, yeah, you don't know now? Because there was no mural on that, on that place in Chinatown. HH, you lied to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Hazard, for your comments.
I just picked up this newspaper and it's talking about Biden goes to Africa. So it's making it seem like Biden went to Africa to do something good. Biden went to Africa because America is afraid, afraid of what's happening in countries like Burkina Faso, Mali, Niger, Chad, and Somalia. They've taken the positions, they're putting the American US armies out of their countries and the French armies out of their countries and they're taking control of their economic situation. And these countries, America and France, are afraid. When Bi, when Trump gets in there, they're going to find some reason why they got to go into Africa and deal with the issue of these rebels taking over. But they were okay with the rebels taking over Syria because it was best for the country. Okay? So I want you to realize Africa is moving on self-sufficiency. Angola is one of the richest resource countries and they, they've been pillaging the resources.
Thank you, Mrs. Sada.
I'm Rosalyn Windham. It is clear that the city is not following its encampment management policy. Offers of shelter are not being made and on the rare occasion they are being made, it is not the vast majority evicted encampment residents. On no occasion have unhoused residents living in RVs or other vehicles been offered spaces at the city's safe park site. Instead, their mobile dwellings have been towed without any information where they're being told to or how to retrieve their vehicles. All property residents have to survive have been thrown as if it was trash. No offers to store personal property have been made. No services are being connected or offered in several occasions. Notice of evictions have not been properly posted and on some occasions notices were never posted. Nikki Fortuna Bass, you have stated you are dedicated to approaching homelessness with compassionate and dignified solutions.
I'm Nita with the Village in Oakland and the Homeless Advocacy Working Group. Since Shang, since Shang Tao made the executive order to erase all curbside communities in Oakland by December twenty twenty-four this past fall, the brutality, traumatization, and inhumanity we are witnessing Oakland's unhoused experience is unbearable and unprecedented. People are literally being robbed of all their property and their dwellings and literally being left on the sidewalks to die with nothing but shirts on their backs. The city's practices are not ending homelessness. You are actually driving people deeper into homelessness and hopelessness. According to the city auditor, these evictions are costing the public nearly one thousand five hundred dollars per hour. And as of this weekend, the evictions are now taking place over the weekend. So city employees are being paid overtime while city offices and services are closed for business. The hundreds of millions of dollars used in evictions must immediately be redirected to be used to provide life-saving services to people in the encampments and to create immediate, long-term transitional housing with supportive services to transition unhoused residents into permanently deeply affordable housing while available. Nikki Fortuna Bass, you have stated that you are dedicated.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Noting that no one in Zoom raised their hand, I will rename those that I called. Seneca Scott, Prescott Chair, Robert Prince, Kevin Daly, Angela Wellman, and Andrea Hensor. Kevin Daly, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments. Kevin? Okay. Madam President, all names have been called.
Okay, everyone, the meeting is adjourned. It's two twenty-eight. Thank you.